Okay, uh, we've got a lot of people who want to speak tonight. We're going to ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Harrison over here will raise his hand, get your attention when you've got about a minute left. Otherwise, we're gonna be here at 11 o'clock. And there's some concerns based on some emails that we have received from some of you that are in the audience. The, uh, also, we would ask that we show respect of each other, respect of this board. No outbursts or anything like that. If we have outbursts or things like that, I will be forced to have you removed from the chamber. So with that, what we'd like to do is stand for a moment of reflection on the things that are meaningful to you. Please stand. Keep bow your heads, please. Okay, thank you. Ask Jonathan Thomas to lead us into the pledge.
Let's move agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jonathan. Please be seated. We need to establish a quorum for this body to take place tonight. And I'm asking for a motion to make Christopher Patrick a voting member. Jonathan, thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, Everett, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Christopher, your own point. Thank you, sir. Next item of business in the package that you received by email, as well as another package that you received, printed by the Admin Office of the Planning Board. The agenda there, hopefully you've all had a chance to read that from the July meeting. Oh, no, excuse me, I said agenda. This agenda, right here. Do we have any additions or deletions that need to be made to that? Any concerns? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve. Louis? Motion to approve? Do we have a second? Patrick, thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Good. Now we'll get to the minutes. The minutes are July the 7th. I hope that you've had a chance to read those. If you hadn't, take a quick look, see if you spot anything that needs to be changed, added, deleted, et cetera. No recommendations then? Ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Patrick? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Everett. Appreciate that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Now we get into the meat of the meeting. Our first item is CZ 2018-007, Beulah Church Road Commercial. I'm gonna ask Lee to come up. While Lee's coming up, each of the board members received a letter from Mr. Martin with some concerns on this. And when I got this, I sent it to Lee and asked him to review it and come prepared to make any comments in relation to what the package actually has in it. And he goes to explain some things, so be sure to pay special attention to this. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll go ahead and, as I said in the email, I'll do my best to try to break down sort of what those issues were that were in the email and try my best to kind of address each one that was raised. So really, I kind of boiled it down to three, three primary issues that the developers' proposed use had changed since the application was filed, that the application inaccurately contained reference to a proposed senior living facility, and that some of the adjacent property owners possibly have changed since the application was originally filed. So as far as the use changing, it is a conditional rezoning application, and that happens in a conditional rezoning application. A lot of times, you'll have the initial filing, there'll be some conversations with staff, staff will have suggestions, developer may or may not change it based on that. There'll be changes that come out of the community meeting based on comments. A lot of times, you have changes after that. A lot of times, the planning board may raise issues that the developer then will try to address. And a lot of times, those changes can even occur during, you know, when it gets to the Board of County Commissioners. If the Commissioners want to approve it, but they see something that they don't necessarily like, they can change it. We don't necessarily like it when they change it during the meeting, but that can happen sometimes. So conditions can be added, uses can come, uses can be subtracted, buildings can be changed around. So that is typical as part of the process. As far as the senior living facility, it is true that this planning board did recommend that that senior living facility, which was across, was proposed to be across the street for Beulah Church Road, the planning board recommended denial. But that's not the, you guys make the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners approved that rezoning request. So that rezoning request was approved by the Board of County Commissioners. And then as far as the adjacent property owners changing, yes, that does happen. A lot of times, sales occur. We always go back. When the planning board, you know, for this meeting, we notify people, we do make reference and look again at the property owner records to see if people have changed. We don't really see if they've changed. We just run a new, completely new report to generate those based on the tax records. And we'll do it again before the County Commissioners' meeting. So we want to make sure that we try to hit all those people now. I have seen cases where deeds have been filed, and maybe there's a lag time between when they hit, you know, from the registered deeds office over to the tax office to update those records. We use the best available data that we have. And as far as the sign, I know there's a reference that maybe the sign had fallen over. The sign was posted, and it sounds like maybe the sign fell over. And I do appreciate the gentleman putting the sign back up for us. Sounds like it may have fallen over again. Unfortunately, we don't have staffing levels where we have, can drive around and look for signs that have fallen over. And the county's big, so we're responsible for not just, you know, the Wesley Chapel area, but New Salem, Marshville. We're responsible for a lot of, all the unincorporated areas. So we don't have as many staff people to, just to drive around looking for signs. But if one does fall over and we know about it, we are out there to try to get it back up. I believe that was it. I believe that was all the issues?
At what point are you gonna bring up the emails that you received?
Yes, so I was getting into that next. So that's the one email. I did put in your packets, we got a couple of emails, I think, over the weekend from some folks. It's front and back, so if you look at the front and back of those, there's two emails from citizens that you got about the Beulah Church Road. And also put on your table a resolution from the Village of Wesley Chapel opposing the rezoner request.
It should be at the very back of your package.
Yeah, they're underneath your packages. Okay. So with that, we'll get into the-
For your sir.
... presentation. As you stated, this is conditional rezoning petition 2018-007, Beulah Church Road Commercial. The most up-to-date site plan is the one you see on your screen. It's approximately 30,600 square feet of office and retail use, has an access point, excuse me, off of Beulah Church Road and off of Waxaw Indian Trail Road. And there was a limitation on some of the uses. I know this most recent site plan came out after the community meeting. I think the developer heard some negative comments about the gas station that was proposed, so they pulled the gas station out, and this is what you've got. And there is, a gas station is not listed as one of those allowed uses. These are some pictures of the general area and of the property. If you look at the picture on the bottom right-hand side of your screen, that is a picture from Beulah Church Road looking at the subject property. And that the other ones are different angles of property. So the one on the top left, that's actually a picture of where the senior living facility was approved. Obviously, it's not built yet, but that's where it was approved. The top right is looking catty corner, sort of across the traffic circle. There is a church and a small, a small school facility there. And then the bottom left is directly across the property that is looking across Waxaw Indian Trail Road. This area is surrounded by two Union County municipalities. You can see to the south and a little bit to the east, you have Wesley Chapel. And to the north and sort of to the west, northwest, you have Weddington. So we did let those towns know about the rezoning. I think that's probably why we have the resolution there from the town. As far as the land use patterns, you can see, this map shows a lot of this as being vacant. The piece across Beulah Church Road is currently under development. That is a, the Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility on the corner and the Twin Lakes Neighborhood that's also, you know, part of that, part of that development. And then behind it, it may be a little hard to see on your screens, but there's actually some platted lots. And I hope I'm not pronouncing, I hope I'm not slating this name, but I think it's Casalano. We actually, it's platted as Grace Meadows. That's what it was called when it came to us, but I think it's since changed, changed names. But there is a subdivision directly to the west of the property as well. Couple of other subdivisions in the area, I'm kind of hovering over those. Those are in the town of Wesley Chapel. And then some established neighborhoods sort of to the north in Weddington. So you've got a mix of vacant, some vacant land, some established subdivisions. And then you have a church, again, that I pointed out on the picture. And then slightly to the north, on the same side of the road, but across Beulah, there's also an existing gas station. I think it's called Nina's Market. So there's a gas station there. As far as major environmental features, there are none on the property itself. A little bit to the north, you do have a stream that goes through that Twin Lakes development. You have some big ponds that are associated with, incorporated into that development. And then you have some various streams around the general area. As far as this property, there are no major environmental features. Most of the properties in this area are served by Union County Water and Sewer. There are some that are served by Well and Septic though, so it's kind of a mixed bag in this area. Most of the newer subdivisions in this area are served by Water and Sewer. Water is available to this property along Beulah Church Road. And sewer, we backed up one. Sewer is available through this neighborhood. There is a utility stub, according to Public Works, at the property line. So there will be a slight extension that would have to be done to connect into the existing sewer. But that is possible, and of course, all improvements will have to be done at the developer's expense. The zoning in the area, again, the vast majority of the zoning is zoned R-40. You do have the commercial piece that is on business. Again, that's inside the town of Wesley Chapel, but you have a commercial piece of property there. And you also have the Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility that zoned R-4, that was rezoned by the County Commission on that northern corner. Few traffic counts in the area. So again, there's your site, just to the south, along Waxaw Indian Trail Road, about 9,400 vehicle trips a day. And then just to the east along Beulah, you had about 1,900. As you move north, Potter Road, you have about 11,000 vehicle trips a day at that location, and about 4,800 trips a day on Waxaw Indian Trail there. CTP shows Waxaw Indian Trail Road to be a future four-lane facility. That is not a funded project. It is just, it is into CTP. There's no timeline on when that will be built. And then it shows Beulah and Potter Road. As you see, Potter Road's two-lane with curb and gutter, future cross-section. And then Beulah Church Road's a two-lane with paved shoulder. Again, there is no timeline on when those facilities will actually be constructed. Land use plan, it does show this area as a neighborhood center. That's the, I guess, the second smallest retail node that we have in the comp plan. Smallest would be the rural center. Then you have the neighborhood center, which is the next step up. So that, it does show this area intersection being a neighborhood center, and then everything else around it being lower-density, single-family residential. You have any questions for staff?
Questions for Lee? Anybody have any?
And I believe the developers here, and also, I think you have the list of people that signed up-
And a new list as well?
Okay. There were a few people in the overflow room that didn't know about it, so I think you have a second please.
The developer speaks. Thanks, Lee. Appreciate your clarification on all the emails we got in.
Go on.
As you come up, state your name, your address, and what you'll be talking about for the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dean Harrell, 2,400 Beulah Church Road. I appreciate you and the board hearing this tonight. I am the registered agent for Beulah Church Road Developers. We, I live about a quarter mile from this site and have owned this site for, off and on, for the last 20 years. We also developed the adjacent community, which started out as Grace Meadows, as residential, and we saved this corner for future commercial or office use. We had our community meeting, and we had a good showing from there, and we listened. We took great notes. The most heated discussion was over a convenience store slash service station. It wasn't necessarily so much about some sort of light commercial or office, but there was a lot of controversy about the gas station convenience store. So we listened to that, and we took it off, took it off the program. We redesigned it to where it gave more buffer between the community and this property. We reduced it to three buildings with a total of 30,600 square feet. Most likely, the uses there now are going to be office, or daycare, or some sort of community, dry cleaners, nail salon, haircuts salon, something of that nature that's convenient for the community. The traffic study was done. There is a newly constructed roundabout there at the intersection. Traffic study was done. We do have right-in, right-outs on both Beulah Church Road and Indian Trail Waxaw Road, which works for us fine. I'm in a situation here where I do know Mr. Ron Gussler, which I went to school with, who is contiguous to the property line at the back. We own the other lot to the left of this parcel, but at the back of it, we understand that they have purchased a home in the community. And the requirement is a 25-foot buffer. But if you look on the map there, we can get, we can meet the 25-foot, and in some cases, 50 feet, and in some cases, 75 feet, because we have now located the BMP in that area, which would be heavily planted around it. Plus, we're willing to do a six-foot berm on that portion of the property line adjacent to them. And also, a screening fence at the top, six foot tall, and plantings on both sides. So we're, we're all about being neighborly. And I think with the gas station out of it, it's gonna take a lot of traffic out, it's gonna take a lot of light pollution out, and hopefully, the community will go more for something that's a community-supported. The, the architecture of these buildings are gonna be stone, stucco, hardy board and brick, architectural shingles. There's nothing cheap about this architecture. Like I said, I go by this intersection every day. I've lived there for 30 years, and if I have to go by it, I want to make sure it's top-notch for the community. If you have any questions, we, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I would like to hear public comments, and if you don't mind, at the end, if you could give me a short rebuttal, I would like to try to answer some of those concerns that the community may have, and see if we can't come to a conclusion of that here tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to start her on this side. Christopher, you have any comments?
Right now.
Okay. Louis?
Not this time, sir.
Here?
No, not right now.
Patrick?
Do you have any elevations prepared?
There were some elevations concluded in the packet, which were... That should have been included from land design. That should have been part of the packet.
Maybe missing that all-
Lee said they did not get those from land design, but we will-
He'll have those shortly. Thank you. Just, I'd like to ask you a question if I could, sir.
Yes, sir.
One of the biggest discussions that comes up, whether it be this board or whether it be from the citizens, is traffic.
Yes.
And I read the question, "What are the trip counts generated by this development?" Response, "A traffic study has been conducted and reviewed by the county and NCDOT, but did not have specific counts on hand to share with the general public." I hope you brought those tonight. Sorry. Are you gonna discuss those?
I can, I can answer those questions.
You want to give us a report on that, please, Bjorn? Because that definitely is gonna need to go before the Board of Commissioners if this passes tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. Behind this mask, Bjorn Hansen, planner with the county. And this traffic study was conducted when it included a combination of general office, some retail, as well as the gas station. The gas station was responsible for about 80% of all traffic. And there's two ways to look at traffic. There's trips, and then there's turning movements. And just in terms of the trips in the area, this again was about 80% high volume to have a gas station and a convenience store. Taking that out and replacing it with some additional retail, you're down to approximately 1,000 turning movements a day into the site. Considering the lack of retail and office opportunities in the area, this probably is going to reduce trip lengths for people making those trips, because otherwise, you know, to get your haircut, or go to the salon, or dry cleaner, you potentially are making a longer trip. So from a, from a traffic perspective, it's easily accommodated within the adjacent network, especially with these being right-in, right-out, and left-hand turning movements being made through the traffic circle, which is the DOT's preference. When they have a site that is adjacent to a traffic circle, they want to give you a right-in, right-out, so you make your lefts by turning right, doing a 180 through the traffic, or the roundabout, and then going the other way.
Bjorn, if I'm correct, some previous presentations by different projects that have come up, the developer has included the traffic counts in the presentation to the Planning Department, the Planning Department in the package that we reviewed. And I guess I'm interested in how many cars are going up and down the highway during the day? Drive time, non-drive time? Is there 20,000 cars?
Are you referring to just the traffic counts along the roads?
Yeah.
So that was the slide that Lee reviewed earlier that had, you know, it was like 8,000 cars on the south side of the, of the roundabout, and like 1,800 to the east. And we can pull that back up. Can you pull this slideshow back up?
I might have missed it in the presentation. If I did, Lee, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, there we go. So 1,900 here. We don't have a count on this leg of the road, at least one that's close enough to be appropriate to use. But 9,400 on the south side over here. And then to the north, probably similar, 9,400, and it splits off between Potter and Waxaw Indian Trail. So yeah, volume's high on, on this road, but they're limited to right-in, right-out, so it's a pretty safe movement. Left-hand turns are gonna be made through the roundabout.
Okay. I apologize for missing that.
That's okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions for Bjorn?
I want to attempt to do something here really quickly, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go right ahead.
I think those images were just sent to me, so we're gonna do this in real time. Okay, so these were, just got those. So there's kind of a color rendering of the site plan. I think those are the elevations that they were talking about, just so everybody can see on the screen.
Good. Thank you.
And I think, Jonathan, you had some questions about those, I think, maybe, possibly.
I guess the only question is, you have a fair, fair variety of architectural features. Do, which of these would apply? Are we looking at single-story, two-story? As you see, like cedar shake, parapet roof, assuming membrane or TPO.
Yes, so we're asking for the option of having up to two stories. So provided, if it's a two-story building, it would be a combination of stone, stucco, masonry, and hardy board. If it's a one-story, as the image on the lower left, that exit is actually a building right beside my office there. We want to use subtle tones. That is a architectural shingle with sort of a rub, stucco finish. And then up on the upper right, we may choose to change up the textures a little bit. We don't want it all looking the same, but unique. We may choose to do a little stucco at the top and brick on the bottom with glazed windows around. So we want to be, you know, certainly no vinyl siding or anything like that, or just standard shingles. It would be all architectural singles, and either stone, stucco, or brick, or hardy board used, in different elements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, we'll start the public comments on C Z two oh one eight double oh seven, three minutes. What I'd ask you to do is I call your name, call on up, repeat your name, your address, and whether you're for it or against it, and then go into your three-minute discussion. So if I could, hopefully I can read everybody's writing. Is it Francesca? I'm sorry, I can't make out your last name, sir.
Don't worry about it, you're gonna hear in a minute. Hello to everybody of the board. I hope you listen to me very clear. I have some situation present. I'm Francisco Espinoza. I live at forty-eight sixteen Wax Indian Trail Road, Matthews, North Carolina, two eight one zero four. Dean Harrow has been like a cancer that I have endured for ten years. In two thousand and ten, I had a dream. In that dream, I saw a beautiful building without a name at forty-eight twenty-four Wax Indian Trail Road. And I say, that's my building. I didn't have all the cash available to purchase the land. So I was in agreement with investor, Mr. Moore, on receiving a loan. However, three days later, the investor visited my house and mentioned, Dean Harrow said the houses could not be built on this particular land you are trying to buy. So the investor backed out based on Dean Harrow conversation with Mr. Moore. Good thing that God didn't reveal the meaning of my dream until twenty-eleven, leading me to build a convenience store that I named Nina's Market in honor to my mother. This is hundred percent true. It was published in several newspapers on December seventh, twenty seventeen. In two thousand and eighteen, Dean Harrow made plans to build a quick rip at the same location. The first week on July twenty twenty, he sent a letter, mentioned again his plan to build a gas station with air dual pump and nine thousand square feet of retail space. Dean Harrow has no intention to develop this land under any of his drawing. Last week, July twenty-eight, a man walked into Nina's Market and mentioned to my registered lady, Seven Eleven Corporation is ready to purchase the land from Dean Harrow, zone as B two. Right after the purchase, they will file a change of the conditional writing attached to the zoning. Or the lawyer will sue the Union County Board and within twelve months, they will start building a gas station at that corner. The land use plan of Union County is on R forty to erect low-density residential home. A B two zoning will by right allow anyone to build a gas station, just changing the conditional writing attached to it. The key of this document is the zoning, it's not the conditional. And you people know very clear about that. This has been done for many corporations before, Walgreens, Walmart, Circle K, Seven Eleven. Your wrong decision can put Nina's Market out of business and allow Dean Harrow to commit perjury. So just keep this property as R forty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You have any questions?
Mike Cuomo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board staff. My name is Mike Cuomo. I live at eleven oh four Hybrook Drive in Wesley Chapel. I'm also a member of the Wesley Chapel Town Council and...
You're not representing the Town Council?
No, sir. But I was instrumental in the resolution that was sent to both the Planning Board and to the County Commissioners on this matter, and you'll all see me up here later on a different matter.
We just have to make that clear because...
Yes, sir.
If you're representing this, that, that doesn't fly.
Yes, sir, I understand that. I appreciate the clarification on your part. Hope that doesn't take from my three minutes.
Are you for or against it?
Uh, I'm against this and, uh, let me explain why. First of all, this property, it borders Wesley Chapel and we've had very many concerns about what the county is doing specifically on our borders. I look at the, the gentleman up here and you all seem very smart. And to me, and the concern that was presented to me by many, many of the residents of Wesley Chapel and Weddington, was that this was gonna be a bait and switch. That as soon as this got zoned from R forty to B two, then no development would actually happen. That this property would be sold to someone like Seven Eleven or some other gas station and it would only be a small change to go from what is then B two to just add a gas station after the fact. The public meeting, or the first version of the plan that I saw concerned me. And then I saw the second version, and then I saw the third version at the public information meeting, and the version we see here today is even another version. So nothing has been consistent on the plans that we've shown. Uh, I'm not sure how you can have a public information meeting about a, a property and then turn around and change the, change the drawings. The open space we have in Wesley Chapel has plenty of area for, in the Target community, for more space. We already have gas stations in the area. We have the Circle K, which is less than a half mile away. We have Nina's Market, which is about a hundred yards away. The neighbors are concerned at the public meeting about if it is zoned a gas station or anything other than residential, the hours that might, the gas station might be open, light pollution, and of course, the traffic studies. So I'll conclude by saying, if you approve this, know that in the long run, you're approving a gas station. This is going to be a bait and switch, is what everybody feels that this is gonna be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, we have Tanya. How do you pronounce your last name, Tanya?
Gessler.
Pardon?
Gessler.
Okay, thank you. For or against it?
Um, against.
Against?
Against, yes.
Thank you.
My name is Tanya Gessler. I live at four oh five Holly...
Speak into the, the mic.
My name is Tanya Gessler. I live at four oh five Holly Hawk Drive. My property actually being referred to backs directly up to his land. This is the back view of the land that he's looking at making into a shopping center slash, when I arrived tonight, I thought gas station. I thought I was building in the, we've been in the county, my husband's been here his whole life, I've been here twenty-eight years. I'm a small business here in town. And I was just a little shocked when I purchased the house in December and it was zoned, I would have neighbors behind me to find out. I would have a shopping area and possibly a gas station, which would put lights in my backyard, sound in my backyard. We have a small dog. We have grandchildren that we'll have one day, and I'm envisioning family picnics and playing with the grandchildren in the backyard. And now I'm looking at something like this, maybe not a gas station, but something of that nature. So I did talk to Dean at the meeting when we came in, and he had said that he would be willing to build me a wall. But a wall with a gas station over it is really not very attractive and probably impacting to the value, but more into my personal life and our home life that we just purchased in December. So I had asked, and he's got that up there, if this was gonna go through, that it would be something more like the bottom left, that would be, look more like a home with a wall that would close us off from that and protect our children, grandchildren out there playing in our lifestyle. And so, you know, I don't, I, I work in commercial construction as a consultant and I would like for things, if you're gonna vote this through, I know that progress happens and, you know, that these things go through. If it does, I would like for it to be criteria set on it to what can be put there that does protect the home that we just purchased. And that's really all I had to say.
Thank you very much for your time. Joshua Wilson. Your name and your address, please.
Good evening. I hope everyone is well this evening. Uh, my name's Joshua Wilson. I live at eighty-three oh nine Potter Road, Matthews, two eight zero, or twenty-eight one oh four. So I am just down the street from where this proposed development is at.
Is it for or against?
I am against this, sir.
Okay.
Sirs. So on that graph, I live right where the eleven thousand trip number was. I live right in that area, right there. I am definitely concerned about traffic in that area. But more to the fact, I was at the planning meeting or the, the community meeting and I raised a number of concerns as far as this development is concerned. And some of those, I, I got some good responses, you know, from the developer about, we're putting stuff in there for convenience. We're putting things in there to force community support. But to that note, if you look at G I S and you look at the area right around where they're wanting to do this, most of the homes in that area have been there for quite a while. They start at four hundred thousand dollars and we are on one acre lots. If we wanted to come out of our front door and look at a nail salon, we would have moved closer to that. All right? Now, if you look at this intersection, where it is at, to the south, less than a mile and a half, we have a Target, we have a Harris Teeter. We also have almost two hundred thousand feet of undeveloped, approved, commercial space that is approved in the Ashton community, in the Ashton Shopping Center, right there. We have donuts, we have coffee, we have all kinds of shopping opportunities right there. Now go back to that intersection where they're wanting to put this at. Go down Potter Road, down to Chestnut and Potter. We have a brand-new gas station and two brand-new shopping developments that aren't even open yet or have shops in them, as well as another gas station, another Harris Teeter, and all this other stuff right there. Why do we need this one added right there? Because if you go the other direction on Wax Indian Trail Road, to Pot- to Wax Indian Trail Road and Old Monroe Road, we have pizza centers, we have haircut places, we have another grocery store, we have C V S, Walgreens in the other direction. We have all that in this community right there, a short distance away. I don't understand why we have to put this right in the middle of all these beautiful homes and properties for convenience. How much more convenient do you need it? I don't need to walk out of my door and be, and walk over to get my nails done, albeit some people might say I need to, but, you know, I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense in this particular location to me. And I can't speak for everyone that lives in that area, but I can speak for the vast majority of my neighbors that I have spoken to. Nobody wants to see this.
Time's, time's up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Mr. Harrell. Do you want any, any comments? Any rebuttal?
I wanna make sure it's understand and they, they understand the conditional use. We have taken out, we have taken out all opportunity to build a gas station, service station, convenience store. That, that is off the plate here. So when I hear people get up and accuse me of a switching bait, look, I'm a native of this county. I've lived here all my life. We've built thousands and thousands upon homes in, in dozens of communities and dozens of commercial projects. So we have listed the uses, we have finite uses. That will become part of the conditional use permit. So everything I've stated here tonight about buffers and, and walls and screenings and the traffic study, all that's documented, that, that is the, that is set in stone in this, in this approval or, or non-approval. So I really take it to heart when I'm accused of a bait and switch. Look, we, we don't become successful doing bait and switches or anything under the table. So I just kinda wanted to say that. You can look a, a lot of places in Union County and see our structures and see our architecture and see our homes, but I, I just want the community, the public to understand and the board and the chairman to understand that there is not gonna be a service station, convenience store type situation here. Thank you.
Mr. Harrell, I'm probably gonna call you back up because we had some late signups, but I didn't wanna pile you with so much information.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So I'll be calling you back up there in a few minutes, okay? Thank you. Okay, Eric McKeel. I got that right? Eric McKeel. Mr. McKeel, state your name and then I'd like your address, but I need to write your address down, so give me time to write it down.
All right, will do. Uh, my name is Eric Michael. Address is four zero one Holly Hawk Drive.
Four zero one?
Four zero one Holly Hawk Drive.
Spell that.
H O L L Y H O C K.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Matthews, two eight one oh four. I'm Tanya's neighbor, right next door to her, so it's just a couple of houses down from me, uh, where they're talking about developing this. It doesn't seem like it's something that's necessary. Whatever you do, if you can absolutely make sure there's no gas station that could be there in the future, that would make total sense because that's not necessary. Uh, there's one right down the street, uh, just like the other people were talking about, there's, everything that you need is very close by. There's no real reason for this to be there for a retail-type property. They're gonna develop it somehow. If it was some type of medical facility, that would make more sense. There's not an abundance of those everywhere. Uh, there's not already a whole bunch of open, uh, space in that regard, so if they have to develop this somehow, it seems like medical office space would be much more reasonable. Uh, but whatever you do, if you could make sure there's no gas station there, uh, and I'm against the, the retail as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. And you're against, right?
Against.
Okay. Robbie McKinney.
Hello, Robbie McKinney, four oh one Holly Hawk Drive. And you just heard my husband Eric speak about this. I just want to, first, I wanna thank Dean Harrell for considering what he heard at the public meeting. That's, it's very important that I think that our developers are listening to what the community is, is saying. And if the intention is that there isn't going to be any kind of bait and switch and there isn't gonna be a gas station, then he's honoring that. I think that's fantastic. I would like to support the idea that, that Eric had just proposed of having this be medical or at least something that has very fixed, um, opening hours and closing hours so that it's not impacting like our, our kids at night or anything like that because we do want to preserve that peacefulness that we have in our community. And I guess that's it, so.
Thank you. Appreciate your time tonight. Jennifer Lowery.
Hi.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you. I hope you are.
Your address, please, ma'am.
Yes, Jennifer Lowery.
Slowly, slowly.
Yes. Um, my address is three thirteen, so it's three one three Holly Hawk Drive, H O L L Y H O C K Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need the zip code or anything like that?
Pardon?
Do you need the zip code or anything like that?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so I live in Castellino, which is on Beulah Church Road. Um, so I actually live next door to Eric and Robbie that were just in here. And so this will also be like right beside our house. And, you know, I, I hate to see this area become commercialized. We've lived in Weddington for twenty years and we like getting away from it all. If you want to be in the midst of all the commercial, then you go live in Waverly or Ballantyne. But we specifically chose to be in that area because we have young children and we just like having the community sense. I am concerned, I, I know Mr. Harrell said there was no gas station, and I'd love to know if there's a possibility of him selling it, that property, though after it's rezoned to somebody who would put a gas station, because that is a huge concern. So yes, we definitely did not want something like that in our backyards. I prefer not to have any retail because like another gentleman said, I mean, we just have such nice community and, you know, just really nice homes and, you know, wanna preserve our value and everything like that. So I do appreciate all of you taking the time to, to hear from all of us. Definitely would never want a gas station if that's any kind of possibility. Don't prefer any retail at all, but as some of the others said, if we had to have something, we'd prefer not to see it out of our backyard. So I, I wouldn't want anything that was tall, I wouldn't want anything that opened past, you know, like six o'clock at night. You know, like even a, a dry cleaners, and they kinda mentioned laundry, I don't know if that would just, you know, be something that would have regular hours or if it would be something that was open, you know, around the clock. or if it would be something that was open, you know, around the clock. But anyway, um, we don't want to take away from what we have because that's why we love Union County so much. Thank you.
Thank you, and you're against, right?
Excuse me?
You're against it, right?
Yes, sir, I am, thank you very much, I'm against it. Thank you.
Okay, Dennis Lowery.
That's my husband, and I'll see if he has something to say.
How are you tonight?
I'm wonderful, how are you guys?
And would you be at four oh one?
I, I'm at three one three.
Or three one three, right?
Yes, sir, I would be.
Okay, good deal.
So, um, uh, just to echo what my wife said, uh, we moved to Weddington twenty years ago from Charlotte. We moved here for the setting, we moved here for the trees, we moved here for the open land. We, we just recently moved into Castellino, we moved from a property where we saw deer, you know, daily almost, weekly at least. And we moved to Castellino expecting the same atmosphere just in the neighborhood because we were, we were on a few acres just off of Beulah Church Road before we moved. We moved to a neighborhood for our children because we wanted them to have other children to play with, but the same setting. We didn't move there to move next to a possible gas station or retail or the, the light pollution, the, the cars, the traffic, the people that it will bring in. We moved into a neighborhood to be surrounded by our, our neighbors, our, our Weddington and Wesley Chapel neighbors. And so we're really concerned about, uh, about losing what we moved to Weddington for. And so it, it, it is, it is not a preference to have commercial there. It, the, the land will support very expensive houses, so, um, the, the land can be used, uh, for many things. It doesn't have to be used for a commercial property. And no matter what we do or no matter what is developed there, it's gonna cause light pollution because we're in such proximity, we can see the, the property from our backyard. So there's gonna be light pollution, there's gonna be noise pollution. And I would be against it if you guys insist on having commercial property there. If we could at least not have a gas station in our backyard or anything that's going to bring in that kind of traffic and those kind of hours, it would definitely be preferable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight. Okay, uh, that's all that I have that have signed up to speak. Before we go to Mr. Harrell for rebuttal, is there anyone here that wishes to speak that failed to sign up?
They may have signed up on the Epcun.
To what?
They may have signed up on the Epcun, um, for the other rezon.
Just a minute. Who are they?
Huey Sexton.
Pardon?
Huey Sexton.
Huey Sexton, okay, and...
Brian Balitsky. Brian Balitsky.
He's not, uh... He's not on this.
I was the first one to sign up, Mr. Chairman.
Just a second. He said Brian, right? Is he out there?
Is, is he okay?
Yeah, he's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll take Brian's comments
Okay.
in a minute, but let's go ahead and start with you, uh, Mr. Sexton. Okay? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, it's a pleasure and nice being, being here again. I'd like to speak, uh, and express my concerns and hope that the, the wisdom of the body here will deny the petition. I've lived there forty years and I don't know what community meeting they were referring to, but, uh, I didn't receive a notice of any community meeting and I'm sure there's others who didn't as well, probably for good reason. But the, uh, one of the few places in Union County where you have four jurisdictions that come together with Union County, Indian Trail not too far, Weddington, Wesley Chapel, and, uh, the road situation, traffic, doesn't need to handle this kind of increased volume. This request and this petition is an overreach on steroids. A mile and a half away towards Wesley Chapel, there's a hundred and ninety-eight thousand square feet of approved space right now that hasn't been developed. And why we need this at this particular location is nonsense. The gentleman who was first to speak, Francisco Espinoza, spent his life savings turning the place that used to be Wheeler's Junkyard into a, that was an eyesore for the thirty-five years, the first thirty-five of the forty years that I lived there. He turned it into a beautiful market with a lot of hard work. All the soil had to be removed and I believe it was a brownfield as a nation. And all new dirt had to be trucked in to comply with what he has now. And it's a beautiful community marketplace. And after all of the offers that he's turned down, I guess the next thing is for the folks to squeeze him out of business. That doesn't need to happen to somebody who's been a bit, a, a good business partner for the community and to have, uh, retail development when we've got retail already approved and waiting a mile and a half down the road makes no sense at all. This looks like another one of those convoluted flipping situations where one person does the bidding for another, it ends up getting bought again, readdressed again, and the planning that we're seeing here ends up on Etch A Sketch. And that doesn't need to happen for the people who have bought their homes here, who moved away from a crowded environment where there was retail out to ying yang and they moved here for the environment that Weddington and Wesley Chapel provide and the, um, and the area where the schools are good and the traffic is already, uh, very, very high volume morning and afternoon back when, I guess life gets back to normal after the COVID nineteen. But this is, this doesn't need to pass, this needs to be denied. And I know you guys denied the previous assisted living facilities, but that was changed by the county commission. I hope you will do the right thing again in spite of what they do.
Time's up, Mr. Sexton.
Thank you, I hope you'll deny the petition.
Before you go, one quick thing, you live in Weddington, what is your street address?
Four one seven Gatewood Lane.
Four one seven?
Gatewood Lane.
Gate, Gatewood Lane.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, come on up. Can you spell your last name for me?
Sure, B as in boy.
B?
B O L I T S K I.
S K I?
Yes.
Okay, what's your address, sir?
Five zero eight Chicory, C H I C O R Y, Circle. And two eight one zero four. I live in that Castellino development like a lot of people that spoke.
Help me out, is that Weddington Wesley Chapel?
It's, uh, it's Weddington, but it has a Matthews address because there's no post office in Weddington.
Appreciate your patience, sir.
No problem.
Okay, we're set.
Just wanted to speak on behalf of everybody else here who spoke about Co- I live in that Castellino development with many others that spoke here tonight, and I'm aga- against the gas station, you know, and I'm against the whole overall commercial development. Um, you know, it's zoned right now for residential. I don't see why he can't just build homes there if he wanted to or not. And, you know, I appreciate Dean hearing out everybody and, you know, not axing the gas station and everything like that. But, um, you know, it would, you know, if you're gonna have something there, it'd make a lot of sense to put, as I think it was Eric who said, medical buildings, you're putting on, you know, you're putting a senior facility across the street from it. You definitely don't need a gas station, Nina's is about thirty seconds from there. You go down the road towards the Target in there, that's one minute, maybe ninety seconds to get to any type of cleaners. There's a dry cleaner there, there is everything there, a gym, everything you need. As many other gentlemen here said tonight, there's already a proposed development that's already happening. Doesn't make sense to put anything there. Six thirty in the morning, that circle right there is busy. I live there, I get up every morning, go to coffee, or I'm on my way to work, either way, the circle's already busy. If you put anything at that corner, that's gonna be, you know, open a long time or anything like a gas station, it would be terrible for the area, terrible for home values in Union County, for anything in that area as many people spoke about. And I just want to go on the record and say I'm against it, against the gas station, any bit at all. But it would make a lot of sense to me, if you had to do something, be it some type of medical building or some, especially with a senior Livingston that has proposed hours. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Harrell. Thank you again for coming up.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. Um, I believe, uh, I've heard medical mentioned many times here and, and, and believe me, we, um, Lee, I believe that use is within our, our list. This is right across from a active adult community, so the use for medical will be there eventually once we get through the COVID. Um, everything's got kind of a pause button pushed right now, but, but believe me, if that use is, is for that, that's the route we'll go. All we're asking for is a maximum square footage of the thirty thousand six hundred, the typical architecture. And, and please keep in mind, the reason we're here is we're in the, the county overlay for this area. The county has identified this intersection, which is gonna be a high-use intersection. Beulah Church Road is gonna be improved, Indian Trail Road's gonna be improved. So it's coming. So all we're asking is within the county-approved overlay is to do these uses. And not to burden the, the staff and the, and Chairman and the Board anymore. I'll just kind of leave, leave it at that and, and leave it at your discretion. I appreciate it. If there's any questions, I'll be glad.
I've got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
Don't you think I'm coming at you being a smart aleck?
No.
Or anything like that? But, uh, I had the distinct opportunity this past seven years to work for Charlotte Score. Starting out entrepreneurs, people that lose their job, or open up a business, et cetera, so forth and so on. The question I have for you is what type of demographic research did you do on this? Through, uh, the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library Business Sec- Business Section with Mimi Curley to find out age, uh, income, children, their likes, dislikes, et cetera, to come up with the thoughts of the businesses that you were laying out. How do you know a dry cleaner would be good there? How, how can you justify it? And then that's, if you have not done that, you don't, you need to know me an answer. But I would ask you to highly, highly consider, because a lot of people don't know this, but Charlotte, uh, Mecklenburg County and the surrounding areas blessed to have one of the fin- finest business libraries in the United States of America. And this lady can slice, dine, wine, whatever you need, she can tell you where and how to get it.
Yes, sir.
And there are companies out there like Buckston is an example. Are you familiar with Buckston? They do the retail analysis and tell you what they would recommend.
Harris Teeter uses it.
Help find people to, with the business that would, you have them to come in. So, uh, don't you think I'm being smart?
No, no, and, and let me add, sir. The only, the only indication I have of the uses is of being in this county sixty years. I started my career very young, at eighteen, in the real estate development and building business. When I've been involved in hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial buildings, um, and commercial projects in Union County proper, um, many of the municipalities and thousands upon thousands of communities and homes that we've built in Union County. When an appraiser wants to know something in this county, my phone rings to ask me what I think the value is and the highest use. Now, I'm not the only one, there's probably four or five bigger developers, key developers in Union County. But the only way I can really answer your question without doing those demographics. Now, we do do, uh, um, studies and demographic, um, layouts along with the TIA's, the traffic studies that, that go along with each other on larger projects. But this one is a, a five acre plus project that just by, when you see the list of uses that we've come up with and narrowed it down, um, that's what we feel ultimately when this whole COVID thing is over, the active adult gets built, the project across government gets built. And there's also another corner across from our corner that's about nine acres available there, that's gonna get built. Um, that's how we came up with the list of uses that would potentially go there.
And that brings me to my question, uh, what is your list of uses?
It should, should be in there. It's typically community, um, uses, um, like daycare, office, dry cleaners, medical, typical things like that, but in nowhere in those uses do you see a convenience store or service station.
So medical, you would consider putting a veterinary clinic in there?
Well, it, you know, it would depend upon... There again, you just have to see how the demographics go across the street and what the potential need is for the active adult there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the list of uses?
Well, I've been reading in, in our, uh, manual here what the list of permitted, uh, uses are, but he said he had a list.
Right, so, so they're, they're on one of the pages that was in the agenda packet. So the specific list of uses are governmental services, library or cultural exhibits, postal service, animal service, which includes grooming or training, um, supplies and, and veterinary medicine, um, commercial service, um, which includes building and maintenance services, business support services, communication services, um, consumer maintenance and repair services, personal improvement. Personal improvement's like a, a barber shop or something like that, nail salon. Um, research service, instructional or service studio, a daycare center, eating establishments, financial services including banks, um, saving, savings and loans and credit unions, offices, and retail uses.
So, uh, if we go with this, uh, B two conditional zoning, we're gonna allow him all, all the uses that he would be have by right in B two? Is that correct?
It would just be that list right there. So there's, there's a whole laundry list of uses that would be allowed in B two, but as part of the conditional process, that's what this would do. It would limit, it would limit those uses to the ones that I just read out. Yes, sir.
Uh, the limited uses, Lee, how did you come up with that limit as opposed to what would be ordinary?
That, that was the developer that came up with that list.
The developer, the developer, so, so it's, so you feel like that's what the market would take?
Yes, we narrowed it down, it was probably two thirds longer than that that the county, that the county allows, but we have narrowed it down to be part of the conditional use permit, that that and that only would be allowed within...
I, I tr- I trust that you, that you took a look at that, that what would, what the need would be in that particular area and decided, well, these guys will, will put this and this and this.
Yes, sir, we would love just to have a veterinary and a daycare there. If that calls for it, that's why we're kind of asking just for the flexibility of the maximum square footage with this architecture, and it may wind up being just two buildings instead of three. If it was a vet and a daycare, probably just two buildings. But if we could have the blanket of the thirty thousand six hundred, we could have that to work with.
When this, when this construction is complete, those buildings will be, will a subdivision be rented and owned by a subdivision company or will those individu- buil- buildings be sold into individual?
It, they, the, we would develop the site and pad it, but the pads themselves and the structure will be sewn, uh, sold to those individuals.
Okay, so when it's done, you buy the building if you want to.
With the contingency of that zoning and that footage, I guess.
Don't go anywhere. You s- before you said you wanted, you were looking at like two stories?
Yes, sir.
How are you gonna screen it from the, the people around that can see it?
So the two stories, um, if you'll notice on the site plan, um, I'll have to have Lee pull up the site plan. We've shifted the buildings away from the community up toward Beulah and Indian Trail Road so that the site angle from the berm and the fence, um, the further you get the building away, the less likely you are to see a portion of that building. I'm not gonna say you can't see the top of the building, but possibly, but by the time the screening... So if you can see the, uh, the roundabout there, um, is, is Indian Trail going down and Beulah Church Road going? so if you can see the, the roundabout there is, is Indian Trail going down and Beulah Church Road going to the west. So we've hugged the buildings closer to the road, allowing parking and then more of a buffer between the project and the residential. And the little triangle you see right there at Beulah and sort of beside the pond, that is common area. There is no home there, that's common area of the community, open space. The next lot, which would be, I think it's Ron Gussler, would be down toward the corner and it's kind of an angled lot there. That is really the, and we own the other piece of property south of that, we don't know what we're going to do with that yet. So really, the only property that touches ours from the community is Mr. and Ms. Gussler. And that's why I'm recommending a berm, a screening, a fence, and heavy plantings along there. Typically cryptomeria, cryptomeria grow up to forty feet, so in time, they're very fast growing, they're evergreen. So in time, it would be a heavy screen. Let's talk about light pollution. So through approval process, you have to present a lighting plan. We will use low-impact lighting, low-light pollution canisters, which actually point light down instead of out. So it focuses on the parking lot for, instead of letting the, the light outside of the canisters. Also, at the corner, at the roundabout there, there is a, a little bit of a courtyard there that we plan on putting a fountain. There'll be some benches there, some green, a fountain, to really, right now, all that's just growed up, the roundabouts growed up. So in time, all of that hopefully can get kept manicured and proper. And then the piece to the right of that map, there's a more acreage that is, is available for development. And I understand there's a group looking at it now, I don't know, I don't have privy to their name, but according to the landowner, there is something going on there now, so I don't know what will happen there. We do have water and sewer to the site. And I, I can answer any further questions you may have.
You mentioned several times the retirement community across the street.
Yes.
Possibly daycare, medical, veterinary. Are those typically businesses that you would see with a two-story building? Do you think that?
Well, and part of that would be office. So typically on a veterinary, you probably wouldn't see a two-story building. You would see more like of the example of the left-hand corner, one-story stucco building. But we are asking if someone wants to come in there for office for convenience, it's typically a two-story building. So we're asking for allowance up to two stories.
So you said that the people that are, are going to buy these buildings, they're going to be the owners of the building, that whatever's in there?
Yes, sir.
So if it's a two-story building, they're not going to live upstairs and work downstairs?
No, won't be any residential here, no residential whatsoever. And typically on a medical, a, a medical facility is, is typically to be efficient on the building is typically two-story with an elevator.
I see on this slide that's brought up currently, proposed zoning is B-three, but that contradicts what we're seeing on the, the paperwork here. So I'm a little confused, I see B-two CZ and then B-three here.
I see that B-three, I'm not, what's the difference between B-two and B-three?
Your, the application had B-two listed on it, I'm, I'm not sure, I think that was done by land design.
That makes sense.
I'm not sure what that B-three is.
If the B-two matches the uses what we're proposing, then I think it probably needs to be B-two.
I think one of the biggest concerns that I keep hearing is the potential for a gas station. And again, you, you've stated your intention to sell these parcels once everything's platted. Just to put everyone's mind at ease, if something like this were to move forward, would there be a zoning, potentially B-three, that would encompass your proposed use, that would make it more difficult to come back for an amendment for a change of use that would potentially include something like a gas station?
Yeah, if we need to change that B-three to B-two, because I'm not familiar with the, the little variance there in it, we want the zoning that does not allow a gas station. And as I've said many times, that's off the board. So whether it needs to be B-two or B-three, we need to meet whatever category that is for the list that we have. And I don't know that I can answer that.
I would just suggest, the application that was filed shows, shows B-two. I'm, I'm not sure who typed the slide up to put B-three on there, but that does show B-three. If there is a question, I would suggest that, you know, the applicant would probably want to just go through the table of uses and make sure that he's comfortable with B-three before they, they commit to that. So just, just my little thoughts on that.
If, if, if we could get a vote tonight to move forward with the uses just on the list, that would be satisfactory to us.
Before you said something to the effect that there might not be three buildings, there may only be two buildings?
Yes, so we're asking for a blanket of thirty thousand six hundred square feet.
So the two buildings would be a lot bigger then?
Yeah, it would be, but it would also eliminate one building. So depending on the end user, it could be medical and a veterinary, or daycare and a veterinary, it may go from three to two buildings. But we have the, the flexibility, the massage within that of the total square footage.
No matter what we do, I think we need to entertain this as a B-two because all night long I've been told B-two CZ. I'm sorry, that's, that's what all our papers said. And I've been looking at it from that, at, at the quote, B-three is much more livid, much more.
Okay.
Okay, B?
Pardon?
I'm not familiar again, and you may be, if you can help educate me the difference between B-two and B-three. Is the B-three allow a gas station?
It does not allow a gas station, but there are several uses that are listed on your application that aren't allowed in B-three either.
Okay.
Mainly some of the veterinarian services, I just went through this really quickly while I was sitting here, so.
All right, B-two would be fine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Lee, I need to ask you a question real quick before we go to one other question back in the corner.
We've got a precedent set based on the resolution signed by Amanda Fuller, acting mayor per NC one-six-zero A-dash-seven-O back in the town of Waxall a couple of years ago. Should this be read out loud or can this be put in the package to go to the Board of Commissioners? Because I know how hard the county is trying to work with these municipalities and municipalities with the county as well as the citizens.
It, it will be in the packet for the Board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, sir, one last comment, because we've got to move on. Come on up here.
Again, my name is Mike Como from Wesley Chapel. The concern that I had, that I failed to mention, is with the location of the buildings, however many it is, or where they're located on the lot. We know this area is growing, whether it's residential, commercial, whatever, those roads are eventually going to need to be wired, widened. Maybe not this year, maybe not five years, but within the next ten years with all this development, those roads are going to have to get wider. And the setback from the roads need to be considered with whatever goes there. If it stays R-forty, if it gets changed to B-two, those setbacks should be increased with the understanding that that road will be widened in the very near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that, that closes the public comments portion of the agenda. We go into discussion mode right now. Jonathan, you got any comments?
Throw it to me first.
Huh? Boy, you were trying to ignore me. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I figured you, you thought I'd have something to say. So obviously, I, I do think that, that the concern with the gas station is very valid one. One thing that hasn't been raised, and of course, I understand it's off, off the books, but I would certainly want to, to make sure that every possible precaution would be taken so that that could not be. And one of the reasons I bring this up is there's a number of older homes in the area, within quarter mile, myself included, where we are on well. And should you have contamination for any reason, then there's your, your source of drinking water. We've had so many issues with the short line extension and the fees associated with it. We don't need anything else that could potentially cause the issues there. Dry cleaners, I don't know if they're still using the same chemicals that they did in the past, but they are also notorious for environmental hazards that could get into the, the water supply. So I, I think we should take a look at that. I feel that we're being a little rushed on this and my knee-jerk reaction every time that I'm rushed or it appears as though my hand's being forced is to step back and take a closer look. So I would advise this Board do so. Finally, as we continue through the process on the 2050 plan, I know there's been several committees working in several different areas. And one of the initiatives there, as I understand it, is to get more input from the local towns and slowly transition these donut holes over to the, the governing authorities there in exchange for more cooperation ultimately between the county and the towns and a more cohesive plan. In this instance, you have Wesley Chapel that has voiced their opposition. I certainly feel as though, between Mr. or Councilman Como's comments as well as the, the letter from the mayor, I think that should be taken into strong consideration. My comments.
Thank you. Patrick?
I got one question for the developer, if I can. Is there a deceleration lane for these right-hand turns in? Or is it just turning off the street into the parking lot?
There is a deceleration lane on one of these right ends. All of this was from comments from DOT. On the plan there, it appears that the deceleration lane for the right turn in on Beulah is there because of the median that's there segregating the traffic that's coming out of the retirement center. I do not, I do not believe, I do not believe there is a lane on Indian Trail Waxall Road. There, there are pyramid structures there to segregate the traffic, but the right in and right out helps much more than allowing a left in anywhere. So the thought process of DOT was if you're coming up Beulah, turning right in, you could, you could go right out, go around the roundabout and go back west on Beulah. So it works, the roundabout helps in either direction, whether you're going east on Indian Trail Waxall Road or west on Beulah Church Road, the actuator is the roundabout that gets you there. But I, I do not believe there are two, two deceleration lanes there. Like I said, we've done this, we've been through the DOT comments and the staff comments two or three times. This is the final plan, all these things start running together after a while, but to answer your question, I know there's one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Everett? Lee, have we done a B-two conditional zoning before? I'm, I'm just curious because.
As I was, I walked really slow because I was trying to search my memory. I, I know we've done a couple of amendments to some B-two districts specifically over there at Tom Short and, and Ray Road.
Right.
There were some, some putt amendments that, that went on there, but they were already zoned B-two. Honestly, Everett, I, I would have to look back and, and, and see. We've done a, a quite a bit of, of rezonings over the past probably three or four years. And I, I honestly, I, I'd be lying if I told you one way or the other or that we did it in.
The reason being, I can't remember one and I've been on here several years, you know? And, but I, I like it because at least you can control the uses of it. And, but, but I'm not forward against this plan, I'm just saying that it utilizes. But we can specify that there will be no gas station in there in this conditional zoning. And we can also specify that the tenants, the renters or the purchasers have to stay within the guidelines of B-two that he has chosen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, so if, if, if the rezoning were, were approved by the Board,
Right.
then all the conditions that were approved as part of that rezoning petition would, that, that becomes the zoning district. So we'll just use the example of a gas station. If, if at some future point, somebody did want to put a gas station there, they would have to come back and ask for an amendment to that process. That would come back to this Board and to the Board of Commissioners again. So that would be basically another rezoning. If you'll remember, across the street, there's a slight amendment that needed to be made to the senior living facility and they had to come back to this Board as well. So that's, that would be kind of the same thing, that, that was a very minor amendment. But, you know, a gas station would be, would be a fairly major amendment, but yes, it would have to come back. And to kind of follow up on your first question, I, I don't remember a B-two, but there was a B-four rezoning that the Board considered maybe about a year ago, it was down at Rough Edge. There was a gas station that wanted to go at the corner of
Right.
Two Hundred and Rocky River Road.
Right.
And that was a conditional district, so it's not B-two, but it is commercial.
All right, well, and this conditional zoning would follow that property, it was Mr. Harold would sell it to someone else. It will follow the property, correct?
It would run, yes, or, or, zoning runs with the land, so no matter who owns it, who sells it, who buys it, it runs with the land, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking questions.
I understand, yes, sir.
So wait, wait, Lee, Lee.
Louis? I am, I find it to be quite perplexing. I can sit here and look at this grown field of people and they all object, all of them essentially from Weddington and the, what is Chapel, which are two definitely residential communities. And yet, on the other hand, I have to recognize that, that, that this land is not in either one of those towns. So things are a bit different. A second thing I look at is, is with this, this development, there was somebody that came in here talking about the privacy. I can't quite see whether, whether, what she's looking at here, so it makes me hard to make a decision on it. But I also do know that we try, we try to tell what you can and can't put in here. Within reason, we could do that, but the reality of the, of the matter of all mess is, is if they, if they put in places selling seal skins, it's probably closed because nobody's going to buy them. The, the market will fill itself with what if people here, here want. That's just the nature of the way things go. But I don't feel like, yet also, I would say that, that, that even though there is retail somewhere down the road a piece that's available, the man, if somebody's want to put this up here because he feels there is a market and they're willing to invest, they've got enough money to find that out. So I, 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 I have a lot of difficulty restricting commercial development of any kind because somebody says, oh, well, gee, you, 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 you already got a shopping center here, or you already got a grocery store, you don't need two of them. That's, that's kind of picking winners and losers here, which other countries do, not this one. So what I'd say to you is, is with all these questions here, I think we need to table this and get a little better grasp on it myself. That would be my thoughts on it.
Robert, any comments? Christopher?
Mr. Chairman, if I could have one more comment, to, to help the Chair and the Board feel and the staff more comfortable, we'll go one step further over and above the conditional use permit, which is attached to this piece of property. I will actually, and I'll say this comment and it'll be in the minutes here, we will. We will indeed restrict the property perpetually to those uses. So that you can't get any, hardly any better than that. Thank you.
Christopher?
Well, that address my biggest concern. And John brought us some good points in regards to the environmental factors and some of the precautionary measures that he'd like to be considered a little further. I think that obviously controlling the use of the land is key. I, I tend to reverberate some of the comments that Louis made with regards to the land. I'm not dictating what it's going to do and, and ultimately if, if there's a need, then they will come. So, um, you are, could you do me a huge favor again and remind me again on the, uh, the traffic study with regards to actual movement of a thousand when you eliminated the gas station proposal?
Uh, yes, sir. It went down from five thousand per, per day to one thousand.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, um.
I got one more question for Lee.
Yes, sir.
We have to consider, and as residents of Union County, I ask you all to consider this with us. Businesses are excellent tax bases. Residential homes doesn't pave the way. I mean, you have to have thirty percent, forty percent, minimum twenty-five percent businesses in order to, to, to pay, to pay the expenses. Houses don't pay the expenses. So we have to look at it that way. And I'd like for y'all to think about this and, and I, I know you'll see I'm leading this. This is a pleasant looking development, not something I think will detract from the neighborhood. And, and it, it seems to be fairly well thought out. And I just don't feel like it's going to be something that would be a detriment to you all other than the fact there could be four houses built there also with no worms, no anything. So you need to think about what if could be. We, we, we did something on Providence Road and they were going to build an office building and we denied it. And then the next guy comes along, wants to put a, something similar to a drive-through food section in. And I told the people, I said, you know, you gotta consider what you don't want. Uh, and what you're going to get might be a whole lot worse than what you don't want. And that, that's why you try to look for something that's got some class to it and will add value to the community. That's, that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Can I ask Lee one question? Okay, you got three buildings on the property.
Yes, sir.
I buy one, I, I make it a dry cleaner. I'm old now, but I get older. I sell it. Does it have to be a dry cleaner? Can it be an ice cream store?
They could change it to one of those allowed uses.
It has to be within a B2.
Has, has to be within that list that, that I read off a while ago. So yes, you could change to uses that were in that list of allowed uses, but not anything outside of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
As I listened to everybody, uh, each of you made some good comments. What I keep coming back to, uh, I remember when you and I first met, you talked about you may get what you don't want, things like that. And that's stuck with me for, ever since I've been on the planning board. But I guess my thought is that there needs to be a little bit deeper planning effort and research on this project. I don't think I can make a, if I said yes, I'd be wrong. If I said no, I'd be wrong. So my recommendation is, is that, uh, this go back and it come back to the planning department and, uh, we rethink everything that we've heard tonight. So with that, I would like to know if there's anybody that wants to make a motion to approve, to disapprove, or whatever.
Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
Let me ask a quick question. Well, I, I missed when, when you were appointing the alternates, is it just one?
Just one.
Okay.
Christopher.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, table this as you, Mr. Chairman, stated regarding a little more research, a little more clarification, and maybe even looking into some stipulations on ours due to the close proximity of not only the current residents, but the future residents.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second? Okay. All of, all those in favor of the table motion made by Jonathan, raise your right hand. You gotta count there.
Yes, sir. I got it.
Okay. Would you like to tell the applicant what's going forward after this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Could I ask a question?
The vote's already over.
Well, it was over before the last witness was up here too, so, I mean, you made an exception for that.
It's not all changes of the vote.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
I wasn't saying it. I was just gonna ask on the motion here, is, is this tabled for a time specific or is it tabled indefinitely?
That's why I asked Lee to come up and talk to us about it.
So if I got, if I understood the, the motion and, and the, um, the vote correctly, you're asking the, the applicant to go back, to do some more research, to, to bring forward a more.
A clarification.
A more clarified and detailed application.
Yes.
Okay. So the way that generally would work is, is that the applicant would go back and, and do those things. And then when they're, feel like they're ready to come back to the board. And, and we will, we'll make sure that planning staff will send out, um, notices to, to everyone again. We'll update that list.
And we'll also let the, uh, people that have been here tonight know as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. With that, we will go forward with the next case. For those of you that have already spoken or are here for the first case, thank you very much for your time, effort, and we appreciate y'all being here. Okay, I've gotta find some paperwork here real quick. The next case that we're gonna hear is, uh, CZ 2020-002, The Courtyards at Howie Farms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this is CZ 2020-002. We got a working title of Howie Farms. This is a one hundred and fifteen, um, unit, single-family unit, um, age-restricted development. It is off of Billy Howie Road. It is, uh, just, so this road kind of to the sort of northwest here, this is Waxahaw Indian Trail Road. Just if, if you were to hit this intersection of Billy Howie and Waxahaw Indian Trail and turn right, you wouldn't be very far removed from the, the target. So one hundred and fifteen, single-family units. It is proposed to be age-restricted, uh, has one point of access off of Billy Howie Road. And it's about two point five five, um, units per acre. And that's, that's the gross density of the project. So when you look at the entire, um, property, and just look at the number of units, it's about two and a half. Uh, these were some elevations that were provided by the applicant, um, as part of their package. Again, I just provide those because they were, um, provided by the applicant. So you could take a look at those. Again, some, uh, some shots, some pictures of the, of the property. The one at the top left is looking, um, uh, from Wesley Oaks looking into the property. So you can see it's a pretty heavily treed, uh, tract right now. So that is the property in question. Property kind of on the bottom right-hand corner is standing on the property looking across the street into the subdivision entrance that's, that's directly adjacent. So if we back up, um, two slides, you see that that's the entrance to the neighborhood right there. So that's the neighborhood that exists across the street. Um, the top right and the, and the, uh, bottom left, these are shots looking up and down, um, Billy Howie Road. So, uh, this, this is looking toward the intersection at Waxahaw Indian Trail and this is looking south. This is what we, this is pretty close to what we refer to as a donut hole. Um, it is almost completely surrounded by Wesley Chapel. There's a little bit, um, of unincorporated Union County directly across the street. And I believe that's the common area for, uh, for the Wesley Oaks neighborhood. So, uh, the properties to the, to the north, to the west and to the south are all, um, inside Wesley Chapel. Again, this is kind of like the, the last request. You can see there's a mixture of developed property in this area. So you've got some established subdivisions, um, and you've got some, some areas that are still um, either farmland or, um, forested tracts. So you can see, um, you know, as you move toward the target, um, it gets more developed. So there's residential right here, just to the north is, is where the target shopping center exists. And then as you move south, you, you do have some undeveloped land, but then there's some more development down along Newtown Road. So you can see it's kind of a mixed bag of, of, uh, things out there. There is a stream that crosses the property. So, you know, if the rezoning was approved as part of the site plan review process that would come much later, um, there would be, um, some potential impacts of that stream. Those are generally handled by culverts and working through the state environmental agencies to, to mitigate. Other than that stream, um, no other major environmental features, um, showed up on this piece of property. Uh, again, um, most properties in the area are served by Union County Water and Sewer. But again, it's also a mixed bag. There are some that are still served by wells and septic tanks. Water is available along Billy Howie, so there's already water there. Sewer is available, um, via a short extension that will connect to a manhole. And I'll show you where that is. There's a manhole in the street in this neighborhood, so it will connect to that. And again, all improvements will have to be at the developer's expense. Uh, zoning in the area is mostly R40. Wesley Chapel, um, does have an R20 district, um, just to the north of this. This subdivision, I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, was originally approved by Union County. So it has some R20 lots a long time ago. I think it was a cluster development, but, um, my understanding from talking to the planner in Wesley Chapel is when that zoning was applied, um, it was because they had R20 lots and they applied, um, R20 zoning to it. But most everything in this general area is R40. Uh, there are a couple of industrial, um, zonings and some mixed use, um, kind of close by. And again, to the north, um, there is the, the fairly large, um, shopping center. Uh, as far as transportation improvements, um, not really many traffic counts. The only one that was close by was, um, just to the south on Newtown Road. At about, I think that says fifty-six hundred a day. Again, this is still Waxahaw Indian Trail Road, so just like the other, um, rezoning, this is proposed at some future date to be a four-lane, uh, facility with, with curb and gutter. Uh, again, there is no date. That's not, that's not a funded project, so we have no idea when that's gonna happen. Billy Howie and Newtown are both shown as, uh, two-lane sections, uh, with a paved shoulder. Again, that paved shoulder is, is, is not funded, it's, it's, we don't know when that might happen. And as you can see, as, uh, Waxahaw Indian Trail crosses Newtown, that also, uh, that four-laning stops at that point. And there's also a funded roundabout project at the intersection of Newtown and Waxahaw Indian Trail. Unfortunately, I don't have my information. Do you want, is that under construction now or do we have a timeline on that?
I don't even wanna wager.
Okay. So that's, that's one of those that's funded, but we have no idea when it will be built. As far as the Union County Comprehensive Plan goes, again, this big dot, town that's in the north is a, a large community center. Uh, when the county was, was going through its comprehensive planning process back 2012, 2013, uh, when they came up with the 2014 plan, um, even though this was in Wesley Chapel, we kind of applied a large community center designation to it because that sort of matched the square footage, um, that was in our plan. So that, we designated that a large community center. And then everything else is generally single-family residential in the surrounding area. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lee?
I believe the applicant is here, um, probably has a presentation.
Okay. The applicant would like to come forward? State your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Mike Davis. I'm with Epcun Communities. I'm Director of Land Development. Our corporate address is 11,020 David Taylor Drive, uh, Suite 105 in that Charlotte, North Carolina, 28262.
And you say Charlotte?
Yes, sir. I also have, uh, for the board paper, if you'd like to have the copies of these as well. This is my presentation, it's up to you.
Give it to Lee. Thank you, sir.
First off, I'd like to say, uh, thank you to the, the board. I know that, uh, those chairs are sometimes challenging to sit in, so I appreciate your service. And I'll get into my presentation. Uh, just a little information about us, Epcun Communities. We're a privately held home builder. We have been building quality homes for the fifty-five plus for over thirty-three years. Our communities are age-restricted versus age-targeted. There's a difference and I'll get into that in the next slide. Uh, we've been actively building in the Charlotte metro areas since 2013. Uh, our communities are smaller than your typical large-scale, age-targeted, age-restricted communities. Like you, you know, the Dell webs and some of the Crest winds, those types of things. Uh, to further explain age-restricted, what is it? Uh, in December of nineteen ninety-five, HOPA Act, Housing for Older Persons Act, was signed into law. Under HOPA, it allows a community to restrict the units to be occupied or owned by at least one member being fifty-five or older. Eighty percent of the community or homes units must meet the above. Annual surveys must be taken to adhere to above guidelines. Uh, these requirements must be deeded to the property or part of the covenants conditions restricted records to the property. Now, senior housing is needed. And the reason I say that, this is a demographic of the area, about three-mile radius around our proposed project. As you can see, projected population is twenty-six thousand roughly. And specifically, population fifty-five or older is projected to be six thousand eight hundred and twenty-one, almost twenty-six percent in the area fifty-five and older. We believe we meet or provide a housing option for that demographic. We've had various, we've been very successful at Courtyards at Wesley Chapel, which is just down on Cuthbertson, across from the high school. Uh, we, I'm getting ready to get into more details on our proposed project. We had two community meetings. We had, uh, we wanted to give as many options or people choice, options to meet because we're under a little bit unique since, you know, scenario with COVID. So we're proposing an age-restricted community. We are, uh, actually increasing the percentage versus eighty. We're going to ninety percent owned with at least one member being fifty-five or older. We're proposing one hundred and fifteen lots. We're starting around. 115 lots. We're starting around the 125, or 325, sorry, 325 plus. Our typical lot size is 60 by 135, setbacks, 20 front, five side, and 25-foot rear. Our average home sale in the Charlotte market is 430,000 plus. At the courtyards at Wesley Chapel, we're averaging 460,000. Our open space is 13.1 acres, 28.8% of the property. We also heard from the community traffic concerns. Our current development as age-restricted doesn't warrant any TIA or traffic improvements, but we did reach out to NC DOT and are discussing some options at Billy Howie and Wendy, was it Waxaw Indian Trail? Yes. Some options there of potentially adding a right-hand turn lane, because right now it's just a single. So if anybody's turning left, it backs up traffic. Now, obviously, we're at the mercy of NC DOT. It's not required, but we're willing to be a participant to the community and drop, do some traffic improvements. And also, you may be asking, well, why didn't we go to the village of Wesley Chapel? And here's the reason. We did have a piece of, of property under contract in the village just recently, last year. We went to the planning director with our proposed plan, and we, we found out the village of Wesley Chapel had removed the age-restricted ordinance, which we originally approved on in the, in, in the project courtyards on Wesley Chapel. So we continue to get traffic and inquiries for this area. So that's why we're here with this project, because we believe we're a good community, we're good for the community, and also we believe that we're providing a housing option to those buyers. Moving to the next slide. Our communities are less impact. We generate 50% less trips per day than traditional single-family homes. And we also, those, our buyers or our homeowners don't travel during peak hours. And this is based on the ITE manual, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So it's not just us, it's science behind it. Also, we have less services impact, meaning your typical single-family home has 3.35 people per home versus 1.7 for age-restricted. We also have less impact on school. Nationally, the percentage is less than 3%. Historical have school-aged children. In our communities in the Charlotte, we're, we're below 1%. The only time we've seen it is when it's been in a tragic event or some event where those, those children come into those, those homes. Also, our communities have less crime. And again, as I go through this, you can, you're more than happy, if you have any questions, I go, I'll be happy to answer. Here's a traffic comparison. And we took the typical single-family classification and used 1.5 units per acre. Then we took our EPCON age-restricted community, and you'll see a single-family detached, 65 units. And then you see our senior adult housing that's detached, 115. The single-family generates 700 trips daily. And below there, it generates the peak, AM peak, and then off-peak trips in, trips out. Under the age-restricted, we only generate 636. That's 9% less than the typical single-family subdivision at 1.5 units per acre. And this is all based on the ITE manual.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Go back to that previous slide, please, sir. You said age-restricted, 9% less than the typical square footage of 1.5 units per acre.
Single family. That's single, typical single-family. That's square footage. Single, typical single-family subdivision, community, however you want.
What I'm trying to equate is, I believe that the, your density you're proposing is 2.55 per acre.
Yes, sir.
And it's, what's the guideline on that?
Well, I think we're under an R four.
So it's, it's R, the, the current zoning is R forty.
Right.
Which is one unit per acre, and they're asking for an increase in that.
To 2.55?
Yes, sir. But not all density is the same. That's part of what I'm trying to, to demonstrate to the board, is that when you look at traffic, our community at 115 generates less than maybe an R twenty that would be allowable under the village and/or, I'm not sure of R twenty, how it works if it was in Union County. But that would be similar to two units per acre. But I've used 1.5 as a demonstration units per acre. Any other questions on that? And I'll be happy to go back and forth any, on any of this. This is the sketch plan. Lee covered most of it. We connect, we'll line up directly with Wesley Oaks across the street. We'll have an amenity center you'll see in the, I'm not sure, right here with a, a pool, fitness room, meeting area, and then also pickleball and another outdoor activity. And we typically will put it centrally located for the community. And then we're also due to request from the transportation have future connection points here and to the lower. The next side is a rendering. It shows, obviously, the amenity center, also the BMPs here on the lower side or south side. This next slide, it shows what we wanted to show, the folks to the north, which would be Wesley. I'm going to kind of toggle back between these two slides. We took the cross-section of Lot Four through here, and then Lot 16 to demonstrate how our homes would fit on the lots. So the slide up top is Lot 16. So all of our homes are one and a half stories. We do not offer any two-story homes. So we have a max height around 25 feet with the bonus upstairs. In this particular location, this line right here is this property line right here. We, we have a 15-foot preservation or do not disturb, however you want to, to phrase it. And then we're doing additional 10 feet of landscaping. We want to create a total of 25 feet of buffer between us and the northern property, which would be the Wesley Oaks right in here. And this just demonstrates how the house and how it would look. This is more product which I think in, in Lee's packet he has. This is a completed project, just for illustration, so you can see how our project's layout. Shows the completed amenity center on the lower side here. This is up in Mooresville. This next slide is an aerial view, and what's unique about our product is you will see a rear fence. It's a six-foot privacy. Then there's a four-foot aluminum picket, and this is the homeowner's area. It's their private courtyard. Everything on the exterior is maintained. In other words, all the grass is cut, front, back, and everything's maintained. The rear yard is passive. In other words, you can't put any swing sets. You can't build anything back there. This is all passive space. So again, when we, but I'm toggling up, when we abut a property, there is no active, active area behind the house. And you can see in this case, they have umbrella landscaping, and you'll see grills, and I've seen putting greens here as well. So it's their private area. This is a completed project courtyards at Emerald Lake. It's off of Lawyer's Road. It's in Union County. It just gives you, it shows the pocket park here, and then the completed mini-center with the pool, and of course, and of course, parking here. The benefits of our communities. We provide good tax revenue for the, for the county and schools with little impact on schools. Like I said earlier, nationally, it's 3%. Locally, we see about 1% of potential school-aged children. We generate high tax base with our, with a low cost per household. Our average price, as I said earlier, is around 430,000. That's over $200 per square foot. Our homes average from about 1,500 square foot up to about 28,000, depending on options and bonus. We use high-quality architectural features. Our floor plans are designed specifically for the 55-plus buyer with a 50-year painted siding. That's a composite siding, culture, stone, brick, and on accents of, you know, on the elevations, and 30-year architectural shingles. Also, our homeowners, buyers support local businesses, restaurants, services near where they live. Also, they are very involved and donate time for the local charities and communities. So if the board has any questions, I'll be happy to, to answer. And we are also open to suggestions or any, any thoughts, any concerns. And I'd be happy to, if there's any public comments, to answer any questions after that through this process.
I've got a question, Mr. Davis. How do you, how do you feel you're going to help the Billy Howie Road traffic impact? You said, you said y'all were going to do that.
Yes.
How are you going to do it?
Well, obviously, we've got to work with NC DOT. There's no planned project for that road.
That's correct.
So we talked to them about improving the intersection of Billy Howie and Waxaw Indian Trail by adding a right-hand turn lane to help traffic move off of Billy Howie. I don't know that it's going to help, you know, 84 and that intersection. But it's, it's trying to do something that's, it really isn't required of us.
Are you going, are you going to influence Billy Howie and Providence and Waxaw?
I, I don't, I don't have the answer to that one.
Because that is a pain.
I know where you're talking about. Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's serious.
It's further down from us, because...
We've had wrecks as, as early as about maybe a week ago at that intersection.
Yeah, and I believe there's a new Harris teeter going in there.
Where?
At Providence and Newtown? Is that what you're?
No, I'm talking Billy Howie.
Okay.
It's where the coffee shop is.
Right.
Cattle Corr is the, the big vacant lot with the water tower on it.
Well, wait a minute. Newtown and Billy Howie, there's a four-way stop.
That's correct. If you take, if you turn on Billy Howie, and you go, you can go into Waxaw and Billy Howie, if I'm not mistaken, comes out over to Coffee Shop.
Sorry, I think, you think of Waxaw Indian Trail.
Yeah.
If I'm wrong, I apologize to you.
I believe that's Waxaw Indian Trail, not Billy Howie. Billy Howie is right. If you were coming from Village of Wesley Chapel, Target, you turn left on Billy Howie before you get to the, the fire station.
Right.
And then, and then Waxaw Indian Trail takes you on down to Waxaw.
Billy Howie does take you down to Waxaw.
It does go into Waxaw.
Right. It's further down.
And there's a lot of people.
They use that road.
Use that road.
Yeah.
And I'm very serious. I'm not being a smart aleck or anything like that, sir. But I'd ask you to take a look at that.
Well, we asked, we asked NC DOT, what, where do you think improvements would help? Because concerns from Wesley Oaks across was that it backs down Billy Howie to their community. So if you're turning right out of their community, it backs up. And so that's where we, we're trying, based on those comments, trying to address that. There wasn't anything further down Billy Howie.
You might just want to visit with the town of Waxaw and find out what, I'm serious, because it's going to, it, it is a very serious problem. The second thing, y'all had some homeowner concerns about some quality there in Waxaw, or West, or the EPCON center there. Did that ever get resolved?
To my knowledge, yes. I'm, I'm not sure exactly. Are you talking about house or roads or?
Well, something with house, like foundation.
Yeah, all that's been...
Dirt problem, all that.
Yeah, it's all been rectified.
Well, good, good, good deal. Okay, thank you. Any questions ever?
No.
Louis?
Not at the moment, sir.
Robert? Christopher? Jonathan? Patrick?
Is there sidewalks in this community?
Yes, both sides.
Okay. How many parking spaces are at the, at the amenity center? You got a pickleball court there? You got a pool? You got a gym?
You will find, most of our residents walk. They do not use the vehicles. But usually, that's co-driven. So I'm not trying to, based on your size of your clubhouse, it's, you know, so many square feet. And I think this one's probably 10 or 12. It'd be similar to the Village of Wesley Chapel for our size, but probably a little bit smaller. But again, that's driven, the, the amenity center is a commercial building from a permitting standpoint, so we have to meet ADA, have those type of spaces. We would also have the mail kiosk for the community there, and it's covered, you know, so that enlightened and that type of stuff.
Okay. How big is that stream that goes under the road when you're coming in?
It is a delineated stream, so it is, we'll have to go through the core and do the proper permitting to cross it.
Will you have to put a bridge in there or?
It depends. Usually, I think in this particular one would be a large culvert. And of course, there's a lot of engineering that goes into that for stormwater and storm events and so forth. But again, that would be all permitted through the, the appropriate agencies.
Okay. One more question for you.
Sure.
Can you, if you can go back to your slide where you had the, running along the side where you had all your trees and...
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the tree on the outside?
Yep, here.
That's already there. That's something that's going to be left there.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Now, the one on the inside are the ones that you're going to be planting?
Correct. And the theory is, obviously, when you clear, there's not much lower stuff. So our, our theory is to plant shrubs in what we call understory trees to fill in to make it a true buffer.
Is 10 feet going to be enough with the, I mean, these, these are mature trees? The roots, the root systems aren't going to be impacted by putting in the next set of trees?
Well, we have to do a tree survey, so we know where they are. So a lot of times we will space, if there's a large tree, we just put shrubs and then space out other trees to fit in between. You know, if, if it's, it's not uncommon, we have more room. We can increase that landscape buffer if that's something the board is, is thinking about.
And then how close is that to the, to back of the house?
It, it's, well, if you could, this right here is the rear setback, so that's 25 feet.
Okay.
So again, these lots are deep, so there'd be a pretty big gap between us and that landscaping and the property line.
Thank you.
I've got one other question, Mr. Davis. I'm very concerned, as is the town of Wesley Chapel, in a resolution, which they oppose it, signed by Amanda Miller Fuller, rather, Acting Mayor per N.C. 160870, that questioning the density. And the density that we have right now is, in the county, if I got it right, is 1.5 units per acre. Is that right, Lee?
I'm sorry, I, I was having a sidebar conversation. Would you ask a question?
Yeah. You're correct.
It is 1.5. Okay. Well, they're proposing 2.5, which in the staff even comments that that's probably too high. Just want to make sure I understand.
Yeah, the current, the current zoning of the property is R forty. And they're asking to go to, to...
2.5.
R four, but then limit the density to 2.55 units per acre. Right? That's, that's what their request is.
And that's similar to the courtyards at Wedding, and not Courtyard Wedding, Courtyards of Wesley Chapel. And that's similar to the courtyards at Wedding, and not courtyard at Wedding, courtyards of Wesley Chapel.
So it's like a cluster?
Yes.
Lee, will this all, if, if this were to pass, would this resolution also go to the board?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other comments before we take public comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate your time being here. We're gonna go to public comments, as we said earlier. Uh, limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Harrison will time you and let you know when you've got about a minute left. And like for everybody to be kind to everybody, so, uh, David, uh, Caphammer, I hope I pronounced that right?
Yes, sir.
Come forward, for or against?
Uh, hello. Chairman, distinguished members of the board, I'm Dave, David Caphammer. I'm at five zero seven Conway Court. I live in Wesley Chapel. I stand against the application.
Thank you.
And, uh, my property backs right up to this project. So I would look out my back window at the line of barracks, so I'm, I'm literally right across the top there. Um, I just wanted to share with you that, so currently, as you already read, Wesley Chapel stands against this particular application. This is the epitome of a donut hole. While the statistics brought forward about the number of retirees that are willing to move to the area, that are interested in the area, I think the most overwhelming statistic is what do the people of the community want to see there? And the people of Wesley Chapel have already made it clear that they don't want to see rezoning go from one house per acre to two point five houses per acre. They don't want to see that. They've already made it clear by pulling their zoning, uh, rules off of their books. They let three projects in in a very short period of time, and then they immediately pulled those off the books. However, if you do deem that this project is something that you'd like to approve or to send to, to the board, I would ask that you consider a few con, conditions, given the position of my piece of property where I look straight at these homes. I, I'd, I'd ask that you can consider, and interestingly enough, this is a great slide to have up here, that instead of tearing down all the woods that are there, so right now the way it would exist is that on the backside of my fence is just all woods. So instead of tearing that down and leaving a few trees and putting in bushes, why not leave the whole thing undisturbed? It's about forty-five feet, you could leave the whole thing undisturbed, it would completely separate the two communities, and it really fills in in the summertime. I'd also ask that, and I know that it's in your application, that you also write into the conditional zoning, that the utilities be buried. I think the builder's already willing to do that, but I'd like to get that in writing. Right now, there is a utility line that runs through the middle of their property. If it is not buried, they will put it essentially on my fence line and, and the other people who live alongside me. So it's gonna literally run right across our fence line, five feet off the fence, which is, you know, about this far. So that's the other thing. And then, uh, lastly, just a reminder that, you know, the, the density is really kind of a, it's, it's a bit of a leap, and it goes outside of, of what Wesley Chapel's really trying to look for and make of their community. So two conditions, the undisturbed buffer and utilities be buried. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time, sir. Mike Cuomo?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, thank you for letting me come back up. Uh, before my three minutes starts, I would ask that, uh, you understand a little bit of history of how we got to where we are in Wesley Chapel? Um, we do have two and a half senior housing projects in Wesley Chapel, all in the process of being built as we speak. One is an Epcun community. And why this is relevant is it was not done because that's what we wanted. We did not want senior housing in Wesley Chapel. It was forced upon us. We were told by Senator Tommy Tucker that you will allow senior housing in Wesley Chapel, or we will take the property away from you and do with it as we please. Let that sit in for a minute. We were threatened to allow senior housing or to take the property away from Wesley Chapel. We were told that if we were allow Epcun and, uh, one other project in from, uh, one other development, we could immediately take it off the books, and it would never, uh, bear its ugly head again. And unfortunately, the day before we took senior housing off the books, we had another application slide in right under the wire. So we ended up with a project that's half in Indian Trail and half in Wesley Chapel, which is why I say we have two and a half projects in Wesley Chapel, senior housing. Uh, this is, as David Caphammer said, the epitome of a donut hole. Uh, we're not happy with what's happening on the borders of Wesley Chapel. This is smack dab in the middle of Wesley Chapel. People aren't happy with what's going on around us. Here it is right smack in the center of Wesley Chapel. And our residents who bought really nice homes that are backing up to this, um, high density. Because we were forced upon it, uh, when we did the previous Epcun community, they said, how many, how close can we get the houses? And first person I called was the fire marshal. He said, you want to put houses fifteen feet apart from one another? From wall to wall, there's only fifteen feet? By the time you add the overhangs, you lose another two feet on both sides. This isn't fifteen feet apart, this is only ten feet apart. By the time you take the overhangs off the roofs, you're six feet between structures, you'll be able to jump from house to house to house. So, we're opposing, as the resolution that Wesley Chapel has already sent in, we're opposing...
You're speaking for yourself, Dr. Cuomo. Please rephrase that.
The Village of Wesley Chapel has already gone on record with a resolution. I'm here tonight speaking for myself to say that.
Thank you, thank you.
I oppose this project. And if the developer tries to use the fact that they already have a development in Wesley Chapel, it was not our choice. It was forced upon us.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, if, if you see someone in a fifty-five old community jumping from roof to roof to roof...
My, my concern, I think, was more related to the fire marshal, and if one unit decides to, uh, his concern was if one unit were to burn, uh, most of the community would probably end up burning.
You should only help it and not hurt it.
Well, they're all one-story units.
I'll tell you what, if we want to see it done, we'll have Christian contact you.
Question for you, Mr. Councilman.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Cuomo, appreciate it. Bonnie Johnson?
He had a question, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I have a question for him, if you don't mind. Uh, you, you say you don't want senior housing in Wesley Chapel. What, what are you looking for? What is your ideal development?
We, we, Wesley Chapel has always been a low-density, um, bedroom community. Uh, we have our bubble of, uh, community, uh, you know, grocery store, the dry cleaners, a place to get your haircut and all that. And we're fine with that, but we like the one-house-per-acre formula. We've tried to keep the one-house per acre formula.
So if this was one-house-per-acre, uh, senior housing, you wouldn't oppose...
No, not at all.
Something like that. It's, it's not the senior housing?
No. I mean, I, we love seniors because they pay their taxes, they keep their yards up, uh, they don't put, uh, a lot of strain on the schools or the roads. Uh, it's not a function of the, the age of the people living there. It's the density and the, um, and what goes along with that.
Thank you, sir.
So...
It's too, it's too much of a cluster. It's a cluster development.
I understand that, that, that you and the people of Wesley Chapel were, were, were a bunch of these houses taken out and amenities put in, and your density would be one per acre, one house per acre, uh, for the whole development, even though a bunch of houses crowded together in a bunch of play, play areas, you would be happy with that?
We're actually, I'm not sure if we, I think we've already passed conservation subdivisions, which is a case of if you've got a hundred acres, and in a normal zoning, that would, that would yield one house per acre, so a hundred homes. But at the same time, if we were to conserve most of the green space and reduce that down to half-acre lots, we're in favor of that, because the yield is what the yield is, and we're, we're keeping more trees, we're keeping more everything. So, you know, we're not anti-green, uh, we're not anti-development. It's the high density that, uh, doesn't sit well with most of our residents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lee?
Bonnie Johnson?
Is there any amount of open space that's needed for each development, like if you have forty-three acres?
The only time you get into a requirement for open space is if you have, uh, if, if it's a, if it's a subdivision that's developed under our cluster standards, which is, 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 is kinda like what, what, um, Councilon Cuomo was describing. If you have a hundred acres and you can do a hundred lots, you shrink those lots down to like twenty thousand square feet, then you set everything else aside as open space.
Open space.
Hundred lots, but it's on less area. That's a specific provision in our ordinance that requires that area to be set aside as open space. Um, this is a, a rezoning to, uh, an, an R four district, so there's, there's no minimum requirement for any open space under this current zoning. But they would be, if the zoning was approved, they would be bound to the plan that they showed you.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, Lee.
I, I also wanted to, um, there was a question that was asked a while ago about utilities, and I meant to, to talk about that during my staff presentation. Um, were the utilities, uh, my understanding was Union Powers would allow you to bury that. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Please. Ms. Johnson? State your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Bonnie Johnson. My address is eight one six Springwood Drive. And that's Waxah, actually Wesley Chapel.
For or against?
Against.
Thank you.
Um, the, as they showed you in the, in their, uh, renderings, the entrance to that development is going to be directly across the street from the entrance to the Wesley Oaks, our main entrance. What they, he talked about the, um, retail development that we have, the grocery stores and stuff, and, and how seniors like to support the restaurants and all the retail. And that's true, being a senior, I will tell you, that's very true. But what they left out is that with that entrance being where it is, that provides a funnel right into our de, our development, which already is experiencing a lot of outside traffic coming in to avoid the high traffic and the backups at Billy Howie and Waxah Indian Trail. They come into our development, drive straight up Springwood Drive, and go out Waterhouse, right into the Target Shopping Center. And from there, they get onto eighty-four, or they enjoy shopping. Or they go across the street to the, um, Harris Teeter Shopping Center. Meanwhile, they're tearing through our neighborhood, which has a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, which they do not observe. They have gone around, stopped school buses who are letting children off. We have many children that live along Springwood, and this presents a severe danger to them. I can only imagine what it would be like with another hundred and fifteen homes with their traffic pouring into our neighborhood because they're frustrated they can't get out of their neighborhood. So they're coming through ours. And as I said, we experience that every day. We have complaints from the residents along those streets, that their children are being endangered, and it's really bad in the summertime, as you can imagine. The existing traffic now already backs up during rush, rush hour to past our development. So you can't even get out of our development. When you get to Billy Howie and the intersection of Billy Howie and, and Waxah Indian Trail, again, traffic is all backed up, so what are they doing if they need to make a right-hand turn? They are driving through our common space. There's a huge hole there that DOT comes and throws gravel in all the time, but there's always a big hole because people drive through there constantly. They've just worn the whole corner off from our property there. Now, I understand that they're working with DOT to mitigate these issues. That does nothing for the people coming through my neighborhood. And they come from eighty-four into that shopping center and drive through my neighborhood, and then out onto Billy Howie. And this development can only exacerbate those problems.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Erin, uh, Garan, is that how, does, pronounce it right?
It's Garan.
Garan, okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, good evening, Erin Garan, five zero seven Palmerston Lane in Waxah, two eight one seven three. I stand opposed to this proposal as it stands. Uh, as Bonnie just shared with you, we are deeply concerned about this entrance.
So you're against it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Continue on.
So we are, as that entrance stands right now, your seniors that are going to be driving out are gonna be taking left-hand turns primarily, because their goal is to get to Waxah Indian Trail Road, to get out into the main area. That's very frustrating. So we are seeing a likelihood of larger accidents happening as people barrel down from Waxah Indian Trail and they go towards that intersection. Already, nobody observes that speed limit. There are officers that sit on that road all the time, and they, they see people going faster at fifty-five mile an hour by the time they pass the, our neighborhood. The other thing that we have to be concerned about within this community is the sewer system. Right now, that manhole sits in the middle of our street. Connection to that is hard. We live further down into our community, and our water and our sewer struggle. We have water problems all the time, and while the community says, and Union County says they're improving it, it's not. They're not doing that, and another hundred and fifteen homes are not gonna help, especially people that theoretically stay home a lot. So we are asking this body to be against this proposal as it stands, primarily due to its entrance, but also due, due to its water and sewer. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I want to thank each of you that spoke tonight. Y'all been very kind to us, and we appreciate that. Is there anybody else that wants to speak before this hearing come to a close? Mr. Davis?
Just wanna comment on some of the comments. I know there, there's concern about the buffer since it's up here. Uh, I have room to do, increase it to twenty-five feet of undisturbed and another ten planted, just as this, increase it another ten feet. So I'd like the board to consider that if, if that's, uh, you know, something you're interested to. The other thing, our product is forty-two feet wide. We're on a sixty-foot lot. So that's eighteen feet between buildings. It's not ten, so I just want to clarify that. And at Wesley Chapel, they're on fifty-nine foot lots, and there's fifteen feet between, you know, the buildings. And then, the, I understand the R twenty, but the fact is, when you have a, a, an age-restricted community where the covenants are set up to maintain the yards, it's hard to mow half-acre lots and making it reasonable, or even acre lots. So that's why our lots are a little smaller than your typical, because the way we set them up, we're just unique, cause it's age-restricted and includes maintenance. And again, just reiterating, not all density is the same, so. But other than that, thank you, Chairman, Board members. If you have any other questions, feel free, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay.
Two questions for you.
Go ahead. Yes.
The, uh, walls in between each unit, you have a courtyard essentially, what are the walls made of?
They're, they're, your standard construction, you know, single-family.
No, the, the walls, uh, of, I guess there's a fence or, or something, or a wall?
Well, there's a, there's a vinyl six-foot privacy at the rear. Let me, all right, let me go back here. Trying to, don't even know my, hold on. So, this is, this is not a wall, it's just a six-foot privacy fence here, between the homes.
Okay, the way you have that depicted, where, where you say that the width of the home, is that the overall structure, or are you allowing for the jet-outs?
Yeah, it's, it's from side to side, forty-two feet.
At the widest point?
Yes. In this particular instance, there's ten feet between on this community.
Okay.
That's why it's a little different, where there'd be eighteen feet in this community. So it's quite different from a, looking down.
Okay. My second question, if you're willing to, uh, give up another twenty-five feet of, I guess, tree save area, wouldn't that reduce the, uh, the load on the landscaper at that point where maybe a bigger lot would be justifiable without getting into the maintenance?
Well, I'm still proposing another ten feet of landscape planted.
Greg, didn't you say you had some leeway to, uh, to add additional buffer there to address the gentleman's comment?
Yes, but from a lot sizing standpoint, Union County has a maximum footprint relationship to your lot size. So... So, other words, our house cannot, was it, I can't remember how it's written, but other words, we size the lots based on the ordinances. In this particular, I've got existing room along, based on the layout, along that edge to create additional ten feet of non-disturbed.
And that ordinance is based on what, the zoning?
Yeah, based on your lot size, it's more than sixty percent of the square foot, your impervious footprint. So, forty percent, I knew it was some. So that's, that's what calculates the lot size. And then we wanted to have similar to our Wesley Chapel in there. Those are fifty-nine, these are just sixty, based because of that ordinance.
Believe you stated that the HOA would, would pay for the green area in between these houses to be mowed, is that correct?
It'd be the back and the front.
Right.
Yes, sir. They maintain it.
All right. How about the green grass that's in front of the homes there in the sidewalk, does the HOA also do that?
Yes, sir. That is part of the, the HOA fees, and they run around two fifty a month. And that includes the amenities center, cutting the grass, you know, those types of things.
I, I'd like to say one thing, and this is not to say I will vote for or against a project, but these companies, they don't just arbitrarily say we're gonna have an age-restricted community. There's a, there's a need for it out there. I mean, I'm sixty-six, and I'm tired of mowing y'all.
We do, we do find that often.
And I understand why people wanna move into communities like this, and when you become aging, all of you, right, Louis?
Yes, I'm seventy-six, you're right.
You don't wanna maintain one acre lots.
And we find that most people wanna be close to family.
Right.
So wherever they live, let's say Wesley Chapel, Weddington, or Waxaw, they like to be there. They, they can't age in a two-story home, that bedroom's, you know, that type of stuff. So we try to be, let's say, strategic in where we put them, based on demographics as, as I presented earlier, so.
I feel like I really have to say one quick comment. I'm kind of out of order, I'm sorry.
Come up to the podium, sir. State your name, give me your address.
I really didn't wanna be that official, but Pete Johnson, I'm at eight sixteen Springwood Drive. And I just wanted to say that when the conversation was just going on, I'm eighty. I turned eighty in May, and I love to cut my yard, and I'm on an acre. So, and I just hate to see things like the, like these houses where, incidentally, if you're talking ten feet, I'll gladly jump those roofs for you. So, so.
I have to wait till my leg heals, but other than that, I'll do it.
But anyway, I just wanted to say that, and obviously, I'm against this.
Thanks for bringing some levity to the meeting.
And you are a blessed man. You really, really are.
Hearing that nobody else wishes to speak, do you have any final comments, Lee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we shall close the public comments portion of the agenda here, and we will discuss this amongst the planning board members. Chris, any thoughts?
I think density is a bit of a concern. I think, you know, the fact that developers got some leeway and flexibility on the buffer helps key some of my apprehension. The, the width of the lots along with the forefront of the home, if it's not as depicted on this line that we're reviewing now, we've got a little bit more space. My in-laws just moved from Orlando to Indian Land over in Treetop, so this has got a slight tug on the heart strength. I think there's absolutely a need. I think it is ever-increasing within Union County, and I think its demographics prove that statistically. I just, I think that as long as we can address the gentleman's concerns regarding, you know, the tree on that buffer in the back, give him a couple extra feet, that will, that will help my class great damage.
Robert, any comments?
No.
Okay, Louis?
Yes, I have quite some concerns on it. Number one is the density that you have here. We have, we have a problem in Union County, and people out here may not be aware, last I checked, we have a, eighty-three percent of the tax revenue comes from residences, people's homes. And ideally, it should be somewhere around, around sixty-five or seventy, okay? So, so the tax burden is getting worse and worse and worse on our residents here. Another thing we have is, we, this particular section of the county, I'm familiar with it, obviously, is beginning to have bad traffic problems because of, because of density. Even though we have a lot of acre lots and stuff, there's still a lot of problems with that. This thing, while it's, while it's, older people, they not be driving through rush-hour traffic, they do a lot of good stuff, but there's, there's, all houses here, there's not a whole lot to do here. So what are they gonna do? They gotta go do something. They gotta get out of here to go entertain themselves, and they gotta go run off. Third, I would say to you, and this, I'm taking this from an old man who doesn't push his lawn mower, even though I'm only seventy-six, I still can't push lawn rowers, and a lot that I can't do. These houses are, while you have an HOA cutting the outside, I've seen what many, most of these things are condominiums. Well, you know, what are you gonna do, if I pop over those houses, and, you know, these stocks, I end this quite bad, I can't afford to maintain this house, it started getting kinda crummy, I can't fix it, I don't need money to fix it. What, you know, what are you gonna do? You're stuck with this thing. It's age-restricted, so it's hard to sell to somebody else, and it's need repair, but, but it's not being taken care of. And that's something I think that's worthy of some thought. But in general, all I'm seeing with, with this thing is high, high-density housing, a, a, you know, more traffic buildup here, more, more residential people paying the tax bill and no industrial, and commercial pay, tax payments. And more use on the roads, but there's nothing to do in the house. So I, I have a problem with, with, with the whole concept. I think it's, it's, it's way, way, way too dense. And that's my two cents.
Everett?
I'll agree, it's pretty dense, but then I realize that, why, that it is dense, and you gotta understand, just like you have starter homes for young people who are starting families small, and it's their stepping stone, we have a need for retirees too, to have a, a, a slow-down home that we don't have to take care of. And I, and I love all you folks, and I don't know the value of your homes, but all retirees can't afford one million dollar homes in Weddington and Wesley Chapel. And there's a need for homes like this. This board has turned down family care homes, retirement homes on several occasions, and I, I just feel like that we're neglecting a segment of our population. The density does worry me. I'm quite concerned about that.
Thank you, Everett. Patrick?
I agree. Two point five five, I think is just too much, as you said, it's just, and everybody keeps saying age-restricted. Age-restricted starts at fifty-five. Doesn't mean everybody's gonna be retired, everybody's gonna be sitting home, there's gonna be people that are gonna be out working. Those are people that don't wanna come home and not have to do anything with their yards and stuff. I just, I don't know, I, I just think it's too much.
Okay. Jonathan?
Well, I will say, I believe it's a, a nice product. I believe the elevations are beautiful. I think, I feel as though there is a tax benefit to the county with senior housing. The amenities are nice, and obviously, EPCOM has done their research, 'cause they're, they've got a reputation of being profitable, and you don't do that by building where there's not the need. To that end, they're proposing this in an area that doesn't want them. The density is not coherent with the, the surrounding area, and it doesn't appear as though anything in that area is really gonna be slated to receive that type of density, certainly not by Wesley Chapel. So I'd like to, to echo some of the comments of the board there. The other big thing is the, the traffic situation. Billy Howie's a nightmare at Waxaw Indian Trail. It's a nightmare everywhere, and this would make things worse. I, I do appreciate that EPCOM's gone to the DOT to see how they could help, but at the end of the day, I have no confidence in DOT doing the right thing. So I don't think that's going to be a solution. I think it's just going to exacerbate the traffic situation. And again, great product, I just don't think this is the place.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Great product, but I don't feel this is the place. I think the density's way too high.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. As, I've listened to everybody and some notes that I've made, and you've heard me talk about the density two or three times. That's my biggest concern, is the density. I would rather have seen EPCOM go out in, outside of city limits or something, in our village limits, and bought a tract of land and put it in. A prime example is the one at Mint Hill. I've got a friend that lives up there, and I've been up there three times, and it, there's not hardly anything that borders it that I could see when you drive in. There's open space, there's a hospital, et cetera. And that's the concern that I've got right here, is that the density is just, it's too, too tight. I can tell you, I'm, I'm over seventy, and I like my space, but it's not what I like. I'm trying to abide by what the comp plan says of one point five. However, I think that Christopher and Everett have said it very well for the need of this. I just think that we're trying to put a dozen eggs in a half a dozen carton, and all, so I'm in a quandary on this. So, anyway, that's, that's my feelings for my part. Is there any more board discussion?
Y'all are more than welcome on the eastern part of county where I'm from, because the last, I had a board member tell me we turned down a elderly care center, and he said, put them in the eastern part of county where the cows are at. So y'all more than welcome to come down and, and, and build a development our way.
Any more comments? Do we have a motion from anyone, what they would like to do? Approve, disapprove?
I'll make a motion to disapprove.
I'll second.
Who made the motion? Jonathan made the motion to disapprove, okay? The motion's been made, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you very much. Jonathan, you made it. Louis, you approved it. With that, a call for a vote. Those in favor of approving this tonight, that go to the Board of Commissioners, raise your right hand. Or disapprove, rather. Excuse me. It's getting late. You got the count?
I do. I got the count in favor of the motion, yes.
What was the count?
So I had four in favor of the motion, I didn't...
Dis, disapprove?
Four, right, so I had four in favor of the motion to send a recommendation to deny.
That's not what we, we said, was it? To send it? Have I heard you right?
To deny the...
Right, the motion was to deny.
Yeah.
So I had four people in favor of that motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hey, man, it's getting late. Okay, thank you very much.
I'm assuming the other two were against the motion.
Yeah.
I have one final comment. Tonight, we have sat here for three hours, and we have, and I respect Wesley Chapel, I respect Weddington, I respect Waxaw, but this was our decision tonight, and we respected the wishes of Wesley Chapel instead of wishes of Union County.
Okay. With that, thank you everybody for being here, and we'll carry on to the next item on the agenda. It's Planning Staff Report.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Let me hear, let me, sometimes it'll... Check that, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Thanks, sir. No problem.
Louis, are you a chair?
No. There's a couple more things.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. So as far as the Planning Staff Report goes, before I, we do have a short little presentation just to update you on the comp plan, but before I get into that, I apologize. Before I get into that, I do wanna update you about some of the, one of the past cases. So the board met last night, and they conducted a public hearing on the Orchard Creek rezoning. If you'll remember, that came, it was down on Rocky River, just south of Highway seventy-five, in the Stone Bridge Golf Course area. The, the board recommended to deny, so the public hearing was held last night. That decision will be in a couple weeks. Also, the decision last night at the board was for the secure turf. If you'll remember, that was the one out on Indian Trail Fairview Road. Gentleman was asking for rezoning to allow RA two hundred, which he already had, to do landscaping business, but he wanted to expand that and do some extra things. And you, the, the board recommended to deny that request, and the board did turn that down last night.
That's great.
And, any questions about any of those before, okay? So I know you're ready to go home, but this is pretty important, I wanna kind of run through it really quickly. So, these are the survey results from our scenario feedback, ah, sorry, the survey results for our, the scenarios that were part of the comp plan. So again, our comment period, it was open from June twenty-sixth to about, to July twenty-fourth. There was online outreach, it was Facebook, website, it went out in the employee newsletter. We also have a list of homeowners associations and interested residents that have signed up online. So we sent out those emails to, to folks, and I, I saw that many of the folks, several of the planning board members are on those committees, and I saw that several of those planning board members shared those Facebook posts with their friends, I appreciate that. And many of our committee members also did a great job of sharing that and getting the word about that, that outreach out there. And I, we, as planning staff, we, we all appreciate that. There was a lot of in-person outreach as well. We did municipal presentations in Mineral Springs. You can see in there, Fairview, Indian Trail, Marshville, Wesley Chapel. We also hit Waxaw as well. We had three public input sessions, that was July eighth through the tenth, and then we had a homeowners association present, presentation to Providence Downs. They specifically requested that we come and, and give a presentation, so we did that as well. As far as our results, we had thirty-six hundred visits to the feedback website, so that's how many people actually clicked on it and looked at it. We had eighteen people come to the in-person meetings. Six people completed the paper surveys there. We also had six committee members attend those sessions. And we also had, on the online survey, a hundred and eighty-seven surveys completed. So as far as the feedback results, this is the preferred scenario. You can see that the advancement scenario had the highest number of votes on that feedback. Management scenario was, was second. And the existing land use plan, it kinda surprised us a little bit, but it was last, but it, it did have a little bit higher number of, of... but it, it did have a little bit higher number of, of likes, if you want to call it that, than, than we anticipated. But you can see, the advancement scenario was clearly based on the survey and feedback results was, was the, was the highest preferred scenario. Least preferred land use plan by, the existing land use plan by far, again, that's the one that was adopted in twenty fourteen. The advancement scenario also had a fairly decent number of least preferred. So it had the highest number, but also had a fairly decent number of people that didn't like it. And the management scenario had relatively few dislikes. Who participated? You can see clearly here, Monroe, Sandy Ridge led the way. That, that's not surprising. I know internally, we've kind of talked about it, we wish Vance would have been a little bit higher. Those are the three highest population townships in the county. And the rest of the, you know, the townships were fairly well represented based on their populations, except New Salem, who did not have anybody participate in the survey. Again, we, we also broke it down by how long you've lived in Union County. So, we had quite a few people who've lived here for a little bit take this survey. So you can see eleven to twenty years was about the highest. You know, folks that are relatively new were, you know, not well rep, they were well represented, but they weren't as high as some of the other folks. And then, then the, the ages of the participants, we wanted to break this down by age groups. And you can see that these forty-five to fifty-nine year olds were pretty well represented. Thirty to forty-four, they, they were pretty well. And I don't know if Boeorn wants to make his comment about this group down here in the under thirty, but... Most important issues, roads and congestion, you hear these issues come up all the time in these rezoning hearings. Growth pressure, development density, you hear that too. Safe drinking water was, was a third one, that was something that, that came out in some of our committee discussions. Parks and Recreation also was a big one that came out in some of the committees. And preserving rural character, again, that, that kind of gets into some of the development and just perpetuation of the agricultural industry as a whole. But these are the most important issues that we heard during that outreach, yes, sir?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Are these ranked in terms of, are these ranked, these top five?
That's correct, right, yes, yeah, they're ranked. Who supported the advancement scenario? Two-thirds of Sandy Ridge Township, half of Monroe, and half of the residents that are sixty and older. I'll let you kind of look at the comments there, those are just some comments that, that were made. We had a box on the survey that allowed you to make some, some, some comments that you felt necessary. So we kind of pulled three of those out, so I'll let you kind of look at those. Good, okay. And then who did not support the advancement? Wasn't really a general trend. Age, township, didn't really affect the results. And then you can see there's some, there's some comments about, against that advancement scenario. Some people thought it might cost too much growth, some people thought it had a number of burdens and regulations and people said they wanted to keep the density low. And that is the presentation, I told you I tried to keep it short. Now, do you have any questions before, I gotta, I have one more thing I want to tell you about. Thursday, on the, August the sixth, there is a, a sort of a summit. It's not really a summit, not a huge summit like last year. But this is a little bit past the halfway point in the comp plan and just in talking to the committees, we wanted to kind of reach out, let the board know where we were, get some possible high-level feedback from them, make sure we're on the right track. We don't want to get to the end and then have somebody say we're, we're doing everything wrong. So on, on Thursday, starting at about eight-thirty, there'll be some light refreshments at eight-thirty, start presentation at nine. Planning staff and, really, it's not planning staff, it's, it's our, our committees will be done presenting by around eleven-thirty noon. There'll be a short break for lunch and then Union County Public Works has some information they're gonna present to the Board of Commissioners in the afternoon. I want to let you guys know, in case any of you wanted to come, we, we would request that we not have a quorum there, because we've not anticipated calling a special meeting for the planning board. But I did want you to know that in case you did want to come out. If you choose to come, there will be...
And that's when?
It is Thursday, so this Thursday, the sixth, starting at eight-thirty.
Lee, I did double check and Thursday's out for me.
Okay.
So...
Understood. Everybody has any questions? That's, that's all it's got?
Eight thirty AM, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's gonna be a long night.
You'll be rested by then, Louis.
Could be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Lee. Any comments? Christopher? Robert? Louis?
Don't say.
Everett? Kay? Patrick?
Thanks for keeping it short, Mike.
Welcome.
Jonathan?
Real quick, and I apologize. I'm a resident of Union County, not Wesley Chapel, not Weddington. I haven't spoken on behalf of anyone, nor have I spoken to anyone before this meeting from any of those municipalities. I do what I feel is based on what the people, the residents of Union County want. I was appointed by the commission to do so. And the reasons that I cited for denying the second request were number one and two on the Union twenty-fifty list, as determined by the residents of the county, various municipal, various different municipalities. So to be clear, this is what the people want, not what the township wants, and that's where my interest lies. Thank you.
Well said. At this point, we have, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Patrick, you have a second? Louis, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
I wonder what's saying that in public? That's what I wonder what's saying in front of everybody. I'm interested in the county, not you.